Thank you. We're going to go ahead and call the February 8th meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council to order. And if I could have everybody stand and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
Okay, next item, please.
Next item is roll call. Councilmember Lopez Taff.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa.
Present.
And Mayor Daniels.
Here.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, February 12th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed at the city's YouTube channel.
Next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Schaefer, seconded by Councilmember Middleton. Any questions or comments about the agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Okay, next item, please.
Our next item is presentation number four, a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights recognizing the month of February as Black History Month.
Okay, thank you very much. I've asked Councilmember Lopez Taff to go ahead and do this proclamation. She'll read it and then we'll come down and take a picture.
All right. Do we have representatives who will be receiving the proclamation?
Not for tonight. We don't have anybody.
Okay, well, it is my pleasure to read this proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights recognizing the month of February as Black History Month. Whereas much of the City of Citrus Heights' strength and distinction can be attributed to the diversity of cultures and traditions that are celebrated by our community. And whereas National African American History Month first originated in 1926 as part of an initiative by writer and educator Dr. Carter G. Woodson to recognize the heritage and achievements of African Americans and to enhance knowledge about African American history. And whereas this year, the theme of Black History Month is African Americans and the Arts, which showcases the historical and contemporary influence African Americans have made in areas of visual and performing arts, literature, fashion, folklore, language, film, music, architecture, culinary, and other forms of cultural expression. And whereas African Americans have made valuable and lasting contributions to our community through an abundance of artistic mediums that empower one another and uplift our communities in social, spiritual, political, and economic spaces. And whereas, as a result of their determination, hard work, and perseverance, African Americans have merited exceptional success in all aspects of society and their impact extends globally, including in business, education, politics, science, and the arts. And whereas, all Americans are encouraged to reflect on past challenges and triumphs of African Americans and look ahead to improve society so that we live up to the ideals of freedom, equality, and justice. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim the month of February 2024 as Black History Month and invite everyone to observe this month in celebration of diversity in our community and highlight the importance of sharing our culture, customs, and traditions with those around us.
Thank you very much. Any comments or anything from anybody? Let's go ahead and go down and do a picture.
You can celebrate. It's okay.
All right, next item, please.
The next item is presentation number five, a proclamation recognizing Diane Ebbett Reilly for her service as Executive Director of the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you very much. I've asked Councilmember Schaefer to present this.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to call Diane Ebbett Reilly up to the podium, please. Thank you. So proclamation is the City of Citrus Heights, Diane Ebbett, for her service as Executive Director of the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce. Whereas Diane Ebbett Reilly has served the community as the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce Executive Director since April 20th, 2020. And as the organization's principal advocate spokesperson, Diane has demonstrated a high level of interpersonal skills by building and maintaining strong relationships with the Chamber's many stakeholders, including Chamber membership, executive committee, board of directors, and community at large. And, okay. Prior to her appointment as Executive Director, Diane served on the Chamber of Commerce Board for many years. She was named Ambassador of the Year in 2004, Businessperson of the Year in 2006, Chamber Board President in 2008. She was instrumental in the creation of the Best in Citrus Heights Program that celebrates the best businesses from over 40 different categories. And this is what this kind of success gets you. It gets you a job somewhere else. So whereas Diane embraced the Citrus Heights Chamber culture and continued to encourage and support the many Chamber events such as mixers, luncheons, workshops, ribbon cuttings, in addition to supporting and welcoming new Chamber members. And whereas Diane is a valued partner with the City Economic Development Staff together, implementing the programming that assisted businesses and created connection, including COVID-19 recovery and support programs, the Love Local Shop, the Love Local Shop, local branding and outreach campaign, Auburn Boulevard Business Association's support, and the City Scoop event series, which is incredibly fun. We can do that again. Are we going to do that again?
Oh, yeah.
It was really fun. And the signature state of the city welcome reception. Whereas, presented in recognition of Diane's outstanding service and commitment to the City of Citrus Heights, her strong support of the Citrus Heights business community, and her love for and devotion to our community have made Citrus Heights a better place to live. Now there be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby recognize Diane Ebbett Reilly for her outstanding service to the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce and to the community it serves, and wishes Diane great fortune as she moves on to new ventures.
Does this mean I get a key to the city?
Do we have a key? I'd give it to you if we had one.
Oh, okay.
Before you... I'll put it this way. I think we should let... Go ahead and you speak, but I'm sure that councilmembers have lots to say about you, Diane.
It was a very hard decision for me to leave the City of Citrus Heights. But I did, and I did it just mainly because of the pay. What can I say? When you get offered, you know, almost $20,000 more a year, it's very hard to turn that down. So... But I truly enjoyed working with the city, working with everyone. The business owners are incredible. The staff here at the city to work with has been incredible. I will tell you that my husband and I, because I was going to get another job and it wasn't going to be in the city, we decided to move into the city. So I will stay connected to the city, and I will be here every meeting. And I will be now joining my Reach neighborhood. So I look forward to still continuing with the city.
Fantastic.
Great. Councilmember Middleton.
Diane, I knew when you took over and stepped up as our Executive Director in 2020 that we had something magical in you. You were so proactive and instrumental, in my opinion, in reactivating our businesses during a time where things were just haphazard critical. I remember us talking constantly about what we can do, sharing data, sharing surveys. And when you came up with the idea of doing that concert in the parking lot, I was beyond through. I was like, that is amazing. And that just goes to show that the level of creativity really helped to carry our businesses through. And it also obviously got the attention of some other folks who were like, you know what, they saw your talent and you're going to be greatly missed. I'm glad you're living in the City of Citrus Heights now. And I hope to see you at a lot more events and see you participating in other ways and know that you'll do a great job, and good luck to you on your new endeavor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez Taff.
Diane, working very closely with you as a volunteer and then on the board, I know how hard you worked. And you gave your all to the Chamber, and I really, really just appreciate working alongside you. The energy that you brought to the job, it wasn't just a job to you, it was really people. And, you know, obviously the creativity that you brought and the relationships you formed. Everyone at the Chamber misses you, and it's only been a week and a half. And so, you know, we wish you well because we know you'll do well in the other community, but we sure loved having you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schaefer, something else?
Well Diane, I didn't get a chance to know you well, but I kind of just admired you from afar of all the hard work you were doing. And as I've mentioned before, I would have loved to attend more Chamber luncheons if my job didn't pull me away for... Out of the city on Tuesdays, so most of the time. Anyhow, congratulations. Best of luck to you, and this is a well-deserved move.
Thank you.
And Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa.
And I didn't know you that well, but I wish you good luck in your new endeavors. Feel free to come anytime to the podium and express your views on the various items we have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll say, when you came aboard, I didn't really know you. And I was like, oh, man, how are they picking somebody? I don't even know them. So I was concerned, and you stepped in and you've done a bang-up job. Your fingerprints are all over Citrus Heights. They're not just on the Chamber. They're all over Citrus Heights. And so the impact that you've made will live long, live on forever in so many different things, so many different events, and greatly appreciated. Without the Chamber's success, Citrus Heights doesn't have success. And so, thank you for what you brought. And just remember, you can always come back. The door's not closed, so find a way back. And somebody will pay you more to be here, hopefully, and...
Ash?
Yeah. So, anything else, Diane?
No, that's...
Okay, we're going to come down and take a picture.
Wonderful.
I hate pictures.
Ash? And Sergeant... Or Commander, sorry, you were demoted. Do you want to come up, please? Oh, and Chief, too.
Diane, you rock.
Thank you.
We love you.
And where's Megan? Because I love you all. Just... Come on. Thank you. Thank you.
One, two, three. Good to go.
All right, next item, please.
The next item is presentation number 5A, a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights recognizing Ryan Jones on the occasion of his promotion to Colonel with the California Air National Guard.
Well, this is very exciting. For those of you who don't know, our city attorney, Ryan Jones, also serves our country. And we're going to give him a little proclamation based on his recent promotion to Colonel, which is incredible. And we wanted to make sure everybody else knows about it. Ryan, can you come on up?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I'll go ahead and read this proclamation, and then everybody will tell us how much we love you, okay? So, and then, are we going to do this first? The President... Or while I'm talking? While I'm talking, okay. Okay. "It's a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights honoring Ryan Jones on the occasion of his promotion to Colonel with the California Air National Guard. Whereas Colonel Ryan Jones is a partner at Jones &amp; Meyer and presently serves as City Attorney for the City of Citrus Heights, providing his expertise and legal guidance to the City Council. And whereas Colonel Jones graduated from the University of California, Los Angeles, he then worked on Capitol Hill with the U.S. Senate Judiciary Committee before attending law school at the Penn State Dickinson School of Law. And whereas immediately after graduating from law school, Colonel Jones was selected for a direct appointment into the U.S. Air Force JAG Corps. He spent approximately four years stationed at Charleston Air Force Base, South Carolina, on active duty in both the legal office and as the Area Defense Counsel. And whereas, after leaving active duty, Colonel Jones remained affiliated with the Air Force as a reservist and member of the California Air National Guard. And whereas Colonel Jones is the Staff Judge Advocate Joint Force Headquarters, Air Component, California Air National Guard, he provides legal counsel to the Adjunct General and the Assistant Adjutant General, Air, as well as other senior ANG leaders. And whereas Colonel Jones has oversight of legal matters involving five wings and over 4,800 military and civilian personnel serving at 10 locations in California. And whereas Colonel Jones judicial integrity, exceptional character, commitment to selfless service to the United States of America and the state of California has significantly contributed to excellence in city legal representation, providing a solid foundation and infrastructure for its residents. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby commend Colonel Ryan Jones on the occasion of his promotion with the Air National Guard. Congratulations." Let's say a few words, and then we'll say a few words if you like.
I just wanted to say, I really appreciate working for a city and a City Council that's so supportive of the military and a community that's so supportive of the military. It's my pleasure to work for the military, but my main job is to do this, is to be here and serve the people of Citrus Heights. So really grateful for that. I'm grateful that I can do a little bit of both and that you're willing to honor that and respect it. So thank you very much, Mayor and Councilmember.
Anything? Go ahead.
I'm not going to embarrass you. But as a military brat and someone whose father was retired Sergeant Major, I know the type of work and dedication it takes to get here. And I want to say that as a council and personally, I am so very, very proud of you for doing that and so proud that you are a part of our City Council, even though you're always calling us out about violating rules or whatever. We'll excuse it for tonight and then celebrate you, okay?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ryan, I just really appreciate and congratulate you for your promotion. But I just really, really enjoy your expertise and your gentle advice to me, at least, even before I came on to council when I had questions. As a regular citizen, you gave me answers, and I just love that spirit about you. So congratulations again, and thank you.
Thank you.
So one of the things I learned about our attorney and Colonel Jones is that early on, the city attorney's role for us is to keep the city out of lawsuits and keep the city and give, when we do have to deal with some kind of legal rampification, to give good advice so that we can stay solvent. It really... It's a true contribution to the solvency of the city that we don't get all wrapped up into all different kinds of legal issues. And I just want to commend you for the job you've done. And there were some times where it's been very tough and we've had to make some really difficult decisions. And we've enjoyed Ryan's guidance through that. So, and I can't tell you as a veteran myself and how much I appreciate the service you give to this country and what that really means. And that means a great deal to me, and my greatest commendation to you, Colonel Jones.
Thank you.
I was honored to attend your graduation ceremony, your promotion ceremony, not graduation. And I just, you know, to see your lovely family there and the support you have from your friends. It was a huge crowd of just friends and family, and it was a packed room. That's how many friends and family you have. And I was glad to be there. As a fellow attorney, I can tell you that you are one of the better attorneys I have seen in operation. So I kind of do kind of bring my law school critique to things, and you are incredibly good lawyer. The city should be proud to have you, not just as a good lawyer, but as a good citizen, and we do honor our military in this city. So you just fill all the little spots that we like, so... We're so proud of you. We really are.
Veteran, that is. Veterinarian, I should say. Yeah, thanks, Ryan. Also, as a United States War's veteran, I know that there are people that hit certain ranks, and it takes a lot to get to certain ranks. And I can remember, we never saw the generals, really, but we did see the colonels occasionally. And when you saw the Colonel, you knew it was time to make sure that you stayed tight. And I didn't get lit up too much while I was in the Air Force, but I got lit up by a Colonel once, pretty good. And so, thank you for what you do, what you're doing, what you continue to do. Thank you for its impact on America's freedom, more than anything. And just keep doing what you're doing, buddy, because we're all extremely proud of you. All right? Thank you all. Yeah, we're going to come down and take another picture. Because we haven't taken enough. All right, next item, please.
The next item is public comment. And if members of the audience wish to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. Mayor, I do have a couple of written public comments for this section to read. I do have some for item 11, which will hold until that item.
Okay. Also, I just want to let everybody know, we welcome members of the public to address the City Council concerning any item on the agenda or within the council's subject matter jurisdiction. We ask each speaker to limit their comments to five minutes each. As the mayor, I have the discretion to reduce the allotted time. We have a countdown display of the allotted time, and it will flash red at the end of the allotted time. Also, consistent with the Brown Act, the public comment period is not intended to be a question-and-answer period or conversation with the council and the city staff. And what that means is that if it's not on the agenda and it is something that could be on the agenda, we can't have a back and forth because the public hasn't been made aware of we're going to discuss that item. So that's what that means. Okay, I think that's it. Next item. Oh, let's go right on to the public comment. First up, I'm going to call up Sandy M.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for giving us this time to speak with you. Thank you so much for being public servants for the people, for having taken your oaths to uphold and defend our constitutions, both the state and the federal. We are coming to you this evening in peace, as we the people, to give you notice and instruction so that you and your agents may provide due care. This national lockdown notice has already been given to 50 state governors, to the President of the United States, to the Supreme Court, to the United States Senate, and the United States Congress. We are now giving you a copy. This week, we learned that the federal government in alignment with the World Health Organization has announced an amendment to a credible threat of a public health emergency. Their expanding countermeasures now include both Ebola and Marburg viruses and extension of liability immunity to manufacturers, distributors, program planners, qualified persons, and their officials, agents, and employees. We have included this report in our notice envelope just given to you. We have also learned that the government was never granted any authority to lock down the people, even in times of emergency. The main object of government is the protection and preservation of personal rights, private property, and public liberties. The government just serves for our benefit as public officers, trustees, and servants of the people. We are also attaching a list of unalienable rights, which includes the right to accept or refuse any medical treatment for any reason. Since this council has a history of putting the city under health emergency orders for extended periods of time, we are very concerned that another round of involuntary lockdowns and health orders could occur in our fair city.
Is that the end of your comments? I have other... I just want to make sure I get the right people.
Yes. Hi, I'm Debbie. Yes, and I just want to say thank you to the city and all that you do. And I admire our City Council and our mayor so much. Please take notice that all states in our republican form of government have sworn to protect individual liberty as a condition to be hired as trustees. The people of America are all guaranteed to have the same rights in all the states. As an elected official, do you believe it's your duty to always protect the natural rights of the people so they are guaranteed enjoyment of all their natural rights? Or do you believe that in some time of panic or emergency that you can remove the people's rights to freely exercise liberty, movement, worship, commerce, or any other purpose that is lawful? If so, please show constitutional authority where you get that power, posting this granted authority conspicuously within the next 15 days, notifying the public and all agents. If you cannot show where you get the authority and you take action blocking the people's rights to enjoy freedom, then any lockdown, mandate, or forced use of any medical device will be construed as being done with malice, intent, full knowledge, and understanding against your trust and indenture, your contract with the people. That would be the Constitution. This notice is given in peace, and with the love of Christ, that you and your agents... is given in peace and with the love of Christ that you and your agents may provide due care to those who have all political power, the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Next up is Nikki.
Yeah, hi, I'm Nikki.
Go to the mic for me.
Okay. Appreciate, hi, I appreciate y'all honoring the Constitution in advance and keeping us safe and sound.
Nikki, move up a little bit. We want to make sure we got you.
I appreciate y'all honoring our Constitution in advance, as you do now, and keeping us safe and secure. I was thinking, maybe with the Goodwill store closing, we can have a big class and teach everybody how to, you know, plan for the future, since we have no border. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is John.
No comment.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, very much. Next up is Kathy Morris.
Excuse me, Mayor and City Council people, I really just want to commend the city for some excellent work that the city staff personnel did in preparing for the storm on Monday. That was one heck of a storm. Many of us lost maybe a branch or two, but the city did a lot of work in advance. And because of that hard work, the city didn't suffer like other places did. I want to say thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Forrest Allen and Ron Ferns. And are you looking to speak together for a total of five minutes? Or do you want five minutes to yourself each?
I think we can just, I think-
Knock it out of the park. There you go.
Together.
All right.
Yeah.
And now, let me, hold on. You're speaking regarding item number 10, which is the sound wall beautification.
That's true.
Item. Okay, go ahead.
And we're, I'm Forrest Allen and this is Ron, Ron Ferns. And we both live in Area 2. And we've been, what, 50 years, I think. So, we're close neighbors, we're a few blocks away. Right. And so, this program that has just been implemented, and you're waiting for a bid, I guess. And we're excited because our area attempted to do this when I was in the Reach Board, not Board, but a member, and along with Tim. And we failed to do that. We were, tried to do it with a mural and that didn't hold up. And we wanted to paint it and that ran into other problems. So, that, both of us failed at the one point. So, Ron has done the flowers for, I don't know how long. Thirty-five years. Thirty-five years. So, he's the one that started that. So, that is, now, Auburn Boulevard, I want to emphasize, is the oldest cross-country highway there is. And it comes down to Sylvan Corners and goes to, towards Sacramento. So, this wall is on Auburn Boulevard and it is the oldest boulevard here. So, we're both excited about it and we want to thank everybody that's involved in trying to get this organized and going. Now, Ron's got a request, since he's the one that's put in all the, all the flowers over the years. Well, yeah, I, Forrest didn't mention that we did some legwork and contacted the homeowners of the sound wall and got their permission to paint the wall. And that's kind of gone now because there may be some new people in there. So, but anyway, there's a lot of flowers in there now. And if the wall is, had some maintenance done to it, I would appreciate it in the summer, when the flowers are gone and so that they don't trample everything. Summer or early fall. And, but, yeah, we had gotten several merchants that said they were going to paint that special coating on the wall. And we had everything kind of going for us and then it just kind of fell apart because the funding didn't come through. So, but, thank you for your time and listening to us.
So, I just wanted to make sure you guys are okay with the bright pink that we chose on the wall.
I, I hope so, yeah.
So, Ron, I just want to say to you that, thank you. You're a real, true American hero, Citrus Heights hero, for what you do. I wish people would do 100 of what you do. And for those of you that don't know it, he gets out there and there's a big stretch of-
All by himself.
What do we call it? Green belt? I don't know what you want to call it, green. Just, but he gets out there and he takes care of it. And then, all of a sudden, all these flowers pop up and everything. And he makes the neighborhood look great, the city look great. And I just wish people would understand, you know, just, you know, get up and do something. And, and so, thank you from my heart for what you do for us.
And the best thing I like about it is the California poppy. And that's what he started with. And it looks beautiful.
It's beautiful. It really is.
I would, I call him Mr. Beautiful, as far as-
He's pretty handsome, yeah.
What he's actually done. And I would, I would like to have him meet Ash, if he, if he could come out and shake this guy's hand. I know Ash has actually started the program beautification.
Yep.
So, Ash, this is-
Ron Ferns.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, it still is working, yeah.
Thanks, Forrest. Councilmember Schaefer would like to make a comment.
Before, Forrest.
Forrest.
Guys, hold on a minute.
I just want to, I want to clarify for the audience. So, for those who aren't aware, so Interstate 40 was the very first highway built in the United States for an automobile. And it goes from Times Square to Lincoln Park in San Francisco. So, it traverses the entire northern part of the United States. And that's the, that's the corridor that these two gentlemen are talking about. It comes right down Auburn Boulevard, through Sylvan Corners. If you see those big sort of monuments that are standing up there that say 40 on them, that's what that means. That's Interstate 40 is the very first built, initiated in 1913, but grew over the years. But 1913, it was built for an automobile, the very first one.
And before that, it was called the Lincoln Highway. And there's a monument, right, in the corners there. And it's got a big L in it.
Absolutely. That's true. It's called the Lincoln Highway.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
And Mayor, I have one more item to read-
Go ahead.
For this section, one more public comment. So, this public, written public comment was submitted by Rick Hodgkins. And he states, "Hello there. I am so happy to hear that the city now has a brand-new option, maybe even two brand-new options for all-you-can-eat Oriental Buffets. I understand that the Tokyo Buffet on Greenback Lane and Fountain Square Drive had a fire back in 2018. And turns out that they will be under new ownership with a new name, even though I can't remember it offhand. But Hibachi Grill Buffet and Sushi Bar on Sunrise Boulevard at Kingswood, right next to El Tapatio. I am actually going to the new Hibachi Buffet Grill and Sushi Bar this coming Saturday, not to celebrate my birthday, that, which was just yesterday, but also for Valentine's Day with my girlfriend as she has to work all day Wednesday, February 14th. At the next city council meeting, I will report back how things went. I will submit further comment on item 12 related." He also has some public comment on item 12. So, that concludes his written comment.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you. I'll start with the good stuff first. I have a child. My eldest is turning 13, so pray for me. He turns 13 next week and I'm not ready. He's, he's an amazing kid and I'm, Emmanuel, happy birthday. And I also want to talk about how this past week, past two weeks, actually, I've been meeting with our local faith leaders in our community to talk about how their congregations can become more engaged and what we can do to support them. And we've got a lot of great ideas. And I'll probably be taking them back to my neighborhood association to figure out how we can plug these folks in and kind of reactivate our community involvement. On a sad and personal note, on January 18th, the first African-American woman who was elected to the Sacramento City Council passed away in her sleep. Lauren Hammond was my mentor. She was the individual who, when all this failed and I had a question, she stood up and she told me what I needed to do and gave me a lot of encouragement and taught me how to have a lot more grace than I normally have. And I appreciated all of her guidance. And she was someone with, whose policy initiatives and her expertise was unmatched in the region. She also served on the statewide gaming commission. And I, she was just someone I really looked up to. And her memorial is tomorrow at Sacramento State University at 9:00 a.m. And I just wanted to point that out. And Mayor, if I could also request that we close the meeting tonight in her honor. Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez Taft.
All right. Been up to a few things. On the 26th, I attended the Rancho Cordova Community Luncheon hosted by their chamber in support of their speaker, who is their current mayor, David Sanders. But he has been elected to be the president of the National League of Cities. And his speaking topic was so very interesting and he called it Laboratories of Democracy. For those of you who do not know Mr. Sanders, he is an actual scientist. And so, he takes his knowledge of science and applies that to his political life. And very, very interesting, very proud to have a local leader lead the National League of Cities. So, that was a very, very good event. On the 27th, I attended the Kiwanis Serroptimus Crab Feed, the one of two that we'll be attending. And on the 30th, I chaired the Citrus Heights Chamber Executive Director Search Committee. And that's when we began our search. You heard here that we honored Diane Ebbett, really. And, you know, the, the search has been ongoing since then. We are getting close and we'll probably be making announcements soon. On the 31st, I attended DA Tianhe's State of Public Safety Address. And that was really, really good to hear what our district attorney for the County of Sacramento is doing. Hearing his speakers just really touched what, what is going on as far as public safety is, is concerned and what the DA is doing to assist victims, to help people get resolution on property issues and crimes happening in front of their property and businesses. And so, I really, really appreciated that, that information. And finally, on the 2nd, I met with Assemblyman Josh Hoover. And they are just going back into session. They are proposing bills, which are all due by next Friday, February 16th. But he, he told me to be on the lookout for some bipartisan legislation regarding Prop 47 amendments. And so, it's nice to hear that it's bipartisan. So, everyone's concerned about crime. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you, Mayor. So, on this last Monday, the 5th, I attended, I sit on the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. I also sit on the Policy and Innovation Committee. We heard some updates from our legislative analyst with regard to the governor's proposed budget. He's, his budget proposes there will be a $38 million shortfall in the state budget. The Legislative Analyst Office says it's really, no, it's more, it's closer to $58 billion, not million, but billion. And so, we did hear about some of the steps that the governor is proposing to close the gap. And one of those concerns, a big concern, was that some of the funding that the city received from the, from the governor's office from the state is now being dialed back 50%. So, he wants to claw 50% of that money back. Very concerning. It's relatively minor impact for our city, but some cities are really seriously impacted by that. You can't, just unreasonable to me to grant this, these funds and then pull them back because you made an error. So, nonetheless, that's, that's really concerning. We'll be watching that closely. If that number does grow, it's closer to what the legal, the Legislative Analyst Office thinks. I think we should be prepared for, for what other measures will be taken to try to close the gap. So, hopefully that, we won't pay terribly too much for that. Really enjoyed attending Colonel Jones's ceremony on Saturday. It was just a phenomenal event. What an honor. Really, really enjoyable. And to speak to some of our public comment, yes, we all swore an oath to hold up the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the, of California here. And we will do our very best to uphold that. So, with that, that's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa.
Thank you. Good evening. So, I went to, with the mayor, on January 26th, to Indian Republic Day. This is the day 74 years ago, exactly January 26th. And it's always on the 26th, no matter when the 26th falls. It's their republic day. It's the same as our 4th of July, that we celebrate our Constitution and our independence. And that's what this was. It was just full of cultural dancing from all the various regions of India, music, singing, and just an incredible group of people. It was, it was great. It was a wonderful experience that we had. And then, so, you know, not knowing what it was all about, I looked up their Constitution, which is a lot like, you know, the preamble of our Constitution. They have a preamble to their Constitution. And it emphasizes justice, liberty, equality, and fraternity. So, I thought that was, just in awe. And I maintained friendship with several of the people I met there, which is nice. Went to, this was fun. We have now a new group, all the vices. So, all the vice mayors and the vice chair of the water supervisors had lunch together. So, Katie Maple from the City of Sac couldn't make it, but she's gonna host the next one. So, it might be my turn, if, after Katie Maple, to host another vice lunch. So, it was nice. I got to meet the vice mayor of Galt, which I don't think I would have met. And the vice mayor of Rancho was there. And it was fun. And Sarah Aquino Folsom hosted it. Also went to the Sac Suburban, you went with me, you were there. You forgot to say so. Sac Suburban Water District is contemplating a merger with Carmichael Water District. And even though it's not my water district, nor is it in my council district, it's interesting to hear the arguments on yea and nay and just the facts of why water districts would want to merge. So, I have no opinion on it. I'm just listening. I went to Ryan's promotion. And as I said, it was, I was honored. You all by now should get, in the mail, your proposed three-year adjustment to the sewer rates. So, I want you to read it carefully because it has some wonderful things in there, such as, we haven't raised the sewer rate in 14 years for your, the sewer collection. And sewer treatment hasn't been raised for six or seven years. So, when you add, it's only $3 a month more. But it'll look like a lot when you get your bill because we bill two, every two months. It'll look huger than it really is. When you look at what smut has done to us and what the garbage district has done, this is small. And I'll tell you, I sit on that board and I am in awe at how the staff does its best to keep the rates as low as they can, how much they try to save and they don't waste because they don't want to have to raise rates more than they need to. They have programs for people who are low income. If those are something you need to know, you can call the district. You can call me. You can, it can lead you to the district person who handles that. But there are some, you know, rebates for low-income people if this is, but they have a protest process through the process. But importantly, there is going to be, in the Citrus Heights Community Center, a hearing, the public hearing process on March 7. It's a Thursday, from 6:00 to 7:30. And I look forward to attending that. And then, let's see, well, Scott. Oh, the boot is coming. We had the boot presentation last council meeting. And the boot will be at Sunrise Mall this weekend. So, it opens on Friday morning, tomorrow morning. And then, it'll be Saturday. They have a safety fair, which is great to attend. There's vendors, there's food trucks, I'm sure. There's all kinds of stuff. There is, oh, a reminder about the park board meeting. For those of you who are in favor of the amphitheater being built at Rush Park, they are gonna be deciding that at their next board meeting, which- They are going to be deciding that at their next board meeting, which is on the 21st. And I believe they meet at 5:30 at the Park District. Want to remind people that, I haven't had a mosquito meeting yet, it'll be next week, but this is, for those of you who have dogs, it's time to really get your dogs going on heartworm prevention. The mosquitoes that carry heartworm live in tree holes. It's the tree hole mosquito. It's different than the West Nile mosquito. A tree hole is where your tree branches come together way up there in the tree and forms little pockets, and the moisture and the leaves get in there, organic material, and the mosquitoes just thrive. And those mosquitoes don't fly far. So if they're in your yard and they're infected, they will be on your dog. So best to have your dogs, you know, see your veterinarian about heartworm prevention, the different ways you can prevent it. For the feeble-minded, there's injections that you don't have to do, but every six months. For the monthly reminder, you have monthly stuff you can do. And so I would definitely recommend this. Ash asked me about it, I says, yes, you should get your dog on flea, on mosquito heartworm prevention. Some stuff they have comes with tick prevention because this is also tick season. So the ticks like to get on the dogs. And to that end, I want to also call, I get on email lists, one more thing I got here. You know, I'd like to give your SPCA update. So the update is that on Valentine's Day, if you adopt a dog at the animal shelter on Bradshaw Road on Valentine's Day, it's only $14 for dogs or cats. And if the dog has been at the shelter for more than 40 days, it's free. And then they have on their website, you got to see this, some pictures of the dogs who have been there for a while, and this one I love. Then they have the dog's favorite song. And here's a dog named Rodeo, or Rodeo, whose favorite song is Fly Me to the Moon. Look at him sitting in his tub. He's so cute. And so if you are, you know, in the mood for some love on Valentine's Day, you might want to take a trip down to Bradshaw Road. And, let me see, Ryan's promotion. I want to second the idea of closing our meeting tonight. And I served with Lauren when, in the days of yore, when, and I admired her so much. She was a, she was a person who could conduct a meeting with just as curtly and as succinctly as a meeting could be conducted. She was forthright in her thoughts, she always told you what was on her mind, and she was just a great lady. And I would love to attend her thing tomorrow, but it's like, I think it's like for four hours, Portia, it's a four-hour event.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's a long time. Anyway, that's all I have, I think. I think so.
All right. Thank you very much.
Adopt a dog.
Just a couple of things. Touch on what Councilmember Middleton said. I want to wish Emmanuel a happy birthday and to make sure he knows he's supposed to give mama as hard a time as possible, okay? I want to echo the comments about Lauren Hammond. I was able to serve on the Solid Waste Authority my first time around on the city council. And Lauren was of a different political persuasion than me, and, but we had a lot of fun because she was very, she was a firecracker. And, and she would speak her mind, and you could speak your mind, and then you could still walk away and be happy and laugh with each other. So, you know, she's kind of a one-of-a-kind that we don't see so much in politics, and she'll be missed, definitely. Okay, a couple of things. As the vice mayor said, I, we attended Indian Republic Day, and there was a lot of singing and dancing, but I want to let you know, we didn't get up and sing and dance, so, you know, the city is safe in that respect.
You had a song and dance. You did a song and dance.
Let me see. Mondays, I, we kicked off Mondays with the mayor recently, and we've had people coming to town. And if you don't know, I'll be at City Hall every Monday from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. You can come on by, and if you want to discuss something or just have a cup of coffee and whatnot. Are we closed this next Monday, City Hall?
I think so. Not this coming Monday.
Okay, okay, so I'll be there this coming Monday. And then, yeah, stop by any Monday that City Hall is open, and I'll be there. I attended the Sunrise Marketplace P-Bid Board Meeting the other day. Good things are coming out of that, they continue to come out of that. If you don't know, the Sunrise Marketplace is the one square mile around the Sunrise Mall area or up in that area. So very important organization that helps us keep that area looking good and promoting it. And, you know, the area is extremely vibrant, extremely vibrant. Yes, we have issues with the mall, and we'll get those resolved soon. But that area is vibrant. Anything you want, you could probably get up in the Sunrise Marketplace area. Let me see. Oh, I attended, along with Councilmember Lopez Taft, the State of Public Safety event, which was extremely refreshing, is the way I'll put it. We have a district attorney that's absolutely amazing. We are so lucky to have this district attorney, and the last one was great, too. But we are very lucky to have Ten Ho, and he is going to make a difference in our safety and the entire county. And so I just think he's just doing a wonderful job. Let me see. Oh, today was the Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting. Thanks, Gina, for letting me take that from you.
You wanted to.
Oh, man. Okay, so, I'm going to say this gently, but, so, when you hear the word Sacramento Transportation Authority, I think of roads and stuff like that. But the Sacramento Transportation Authority oversees the Measure A half-cent sales tax, I think it is, that is collected, and then I think we pay a dollar per car when you register your car and that kind of a thing. And so today, we kicked off, is the way I'll put it, the notion that over the next years or whatever, the Sacramento Transportation Authority will spend anywhere between $500 and $650 million of your tax dollars to put trails in throughout Sacramento County. And it kind of upset me, but I got to tell you, I'm not fully aware of the, how all those funds work. And so I asked, and lo and behold, you know, we as the voters approved this, back when it was approved for a 30-year period. It included language that said, I think, something like active transportation. And that means walking, riding your bike, riding a scooter, whatever, but it means anything but a car or fill in a pothole or something like that. And so I can only imagine what we could do with $650 million throughout Sacramento County and on our roads. But that's not going to happen because we signed up for a deal that allowed such a big chunk of the money to go to that instead. And that was about it for that meeting. Almost done. Rotary Crab Feed is this Saturday? Yes? If you haven't bought your tickets, I don't know if they're sold out, but they typically sell them.
They're sold out.
Yeah. If you didn't buy your tickets, you're too late, but it'll be a good time, we'll let you know about it. Oh, I attended the Purple and Gold Gala a couple of weeks ago, and that's put on by the Purple Pageant. And it's basically an organization that does, like beauty pageant kind of things for girls of all ages, and it's about building the future. And they also take on the lupus disease as something that they educate people on. And so they put on a gala, it was absolutely wonderful. If you ever get a chance to go to these kind of things, you'll want to go because one of the things we also do is we do live auctions and things like that. And I was able to walk away with a 50-inch TV for 250 bucks, so you should have been there. So it's a great time, a great organization, they're doing wonderful things. And to see these youngsters, especially these young girls, that they're very strong in teaching how to be proper, how to do etiquette, how to do all these things that are kind of missing from the world these days. And that's just going to, to put those, I think, those young ladies on a path along the way to move into organizations like Councilmember Lopez Taft is involved with, with Junior Achievement and the girls, and building, you know, female entrepreneurs, and, so it's just fantastic. So it was a good event, and it was their first annual, so they'll be doing it again next year. And please attend if you can. And then I see some high school kids, I think, in the audience. If you're in high school, if you could please stand up. And could you come right over here for a minute, please? Step over here. Come on up here for a minute. Could you step right up here and tell us where you're from and why you're here, and who you are?
My name is Rachel Alvarez. We're from Bella Vista High School. We're here because we're taking government for a semester, and one of our assignments was to attend a government meeting of any kind. So we chose to come to the Citrus Heights meeting, and yeah, we're here just taking notes and completing that assignment.
Thank you. Next up.
I'm Chloe Yones.
Okay.
I'm Gabriela Chansery.
All right. Thanks for coming out, and so you guys know you're on TV right now, so make sure you tell your friends. Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm just curious, do you understand how your local government works? You might understand how Congress works, and I found that when I talk to young people, they really don't understand. So we're your local government? We have the most impact on your lives of anyone? And so that man right there, he's the city manager, okay? So he runs the day-to-day, and all of us? Wow, we look very powerful, don't we? We're all part-time. We all, we all, we're really, you know, we're here, we want to serve, we don't get paid a lot of money, but the bottom line is, we set the policy for our city, for, you know, I think we set a policy of parking ordinance, we, we actually, I hope you'll come out to the, to, we have a patriotic event coming up on June 29th in this park that's, I think it's in the park right behind here. That, all, that funding is all stuff that we approve. So this is your local government at work, and thank you for coming here and learning that. Really appreciate that.
I wanted to say that if you gals tell your teacher to contact the city, one of us can come and speak at your class. Somebody might be available, we'd kind of be happy to speak at your class. So just contact the city, that guy right in the middle, his office, and he can get it done.
And our meeting is going to go long, and you guys can leave whenever you want to. We won't be offended, okay? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then my final thing is, next week is Valentine's Day, February 14th, if you haven't figured it out yet. And fellas, don't mess it up, don't mess it up. If she says she doesn't want anything, she wants something. So do it right, and get your little lady something for Valentine's Day. That's it.
Or go to the shelter, get a dog.
Oh, I was just going to say, I think I'm going to get mine a dog, yeah. Okay, I think that's it. Next item, please.
Next item is our consent calendar item, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10.
Anybody desire to pull any item from the consent calendar?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Vice Mayor Karpinski Costa, seconded by Councilmember Middleton. Any questions or comments on the consent items? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All against? Passes. Next item, please.
The next item is regular calendar, item number 11. The subject is cannabis dispensary study session, and staff recommends that the city council provide feedback and direction whether to proceed with necessary municipal code updates necessary to allow retail cannabis businesses as set forth in the staff report. Approve a proposed timeline for implementation and provide direction whether or not to proceed with a cannabis tax measure for the November 2024 ballot.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Casey Kempinari, Community Development Director, here to go over this item with you tonight. So as council recall, in December, two council members asked us to bring this item back within 60 days to consider whether we want to stop or change our regulations related to cannabis, which are currently banned in the city. So we're here tonight to go over those options and hear what your feedback might be. So tonight, we're going to go over a little bit high-level overview, we're not going to get too deep into the, to the regulations. We're going to talk about the different revenue options and considerations to consider. We're going to talk about if we move forward, what outreach might look like. We'll highlight a potential timeline, and then we'll ask you for your direction. So cannabis has been around for quite a while now in the state regulatory regime. It started kind of in, with Prop 215, which was focused on medicinal. More recently, Prop 64 was passed, which allows it for recreational. And you'll see a number of cities around the region have those type of dispensaries in their, in their cities. The Citrus Heights Municipal Code has largely prohibited cannabis, marijuana uses for quite some time in our zoning code, in our municipal code, our business license section, and then also within our three specific plans we have here at the city. Of note, deliveries are allowed by the state to come into the city regardless of what our regulations say. So that is occurring currently, and I'll have a slide on that in a moment. Other nearby agencies have dispensaries, mostly on the 80 corridor, City of Sacramento, City of Davis, City of Dixon, and City of Colfax. It is a pretty heavily regulated industry that has the Department of Cannabis Control, oversees that through the state, and where the state often is taking away our ability to, at the local level, to regulate things. And this is one case where they won't get a license if it's not allowed by the city. So they, we still have some discretion there. They do have some operating standards, hours of operation from 6:00 to 10:00 typically. There is some nuance between recreation and medicinal, but most places kind of treat them similarly. The only difference is, well, there's probably lots of differences, but one of the main differences, 18-plus for medical, 21-plus for recreational. To be a medicinal patient, you have to get an approved medical card for recreational, you don't, you just have to be over 21. The state does have distance requirements, but they're required to be at least 600 feet away from schools, days, cares, and use centers. The city can modify and create their own separation requirements. I will note, the staff report did mention that there was a requirement from the state to be at least 600 feet away from another dispensary. That was an error. The state doesn't require that, but some cities do, and that is an option, the city could require a distance between similar uses. And then again, deliveries are permitted regardless of what our ordinance says. Speaking of deliveries, deliveries are occurring now. There's over 100 delivery services in the region. If you look at Weed Maps, over 30 come here to the city currently. They should be paying sales tax, and if they're, if we had a local tax, they would, should be paying that, so we would be capturing a part of that. So in terms of revenue, there's a couple of different approaches. Generally, the most common way is a voter-approved cannabis tax, and then another way is development agreement with a community benefits fund. And I'm going to talk about each of those here shortly. So cannabis tax is based on the gross, generally based on the gross receipts that are sold. The state has an excise tax, it's about 15%, and then we have a sales tax, 7.75 here in Citrus Heights. And then there's a range, depending on what each agency has chosen what they charge as a local tax. In order to create a cannabis tax, staff would bring, draft a tax measure for your consideration. Council action would be needed to place on the ballot with a four-fifths vote. If that was the case, and we receive four-fifths vote, we would bring it back, or that would be on the ballot for November 5th, 2024. And if that passed with a majority vote, tax could be implemented starting January 1st. So each of the local agencies that have cannabis sales, they have different tax rates. And generally, those are passed, but when the voters pass them, they're passed that, it's a maximum. And then the council has the discretion to raise or lower them depending on the market or other considerations they may want to think about. So you can see here, it's a range from 4% to 15% locally. There's no magic number, the council can determine what they think is appropriate. Also, I think it's important to note, there are other agencies that have considered recently or will be considering or have voiced that they might consider cannabis, opening the doors to that. Auburn, there's been some news about them looking into it. I'm not sure how far along they are. County of Sacramento, back in 2022, looked at it, they were unable to get the four-fifths vote necessary to put on the ballot, so it failed. I'm not sure where they're at on it today. But all that to say, it's fair to say that this will be generally a flat revenue source if it was something to move forward. We see that there's going to be more competition, probably locally with other jurisdictions, and we don't see that growing. It'd probably be flatter, even declining as there's more competition. And then the other option to develop revenue is a development agreement process. So many of you are familiar with, in our land use review of projects, there's a development agreement, and those are basically agreement between the city and the private party agreeing to certain terms and conditions and operating conditions and whatnot. We had one previously at Stock Ranch, as an example, that outlined the city's responsibility for improvements and then the developer's responsibility. So similar in concept, generally, this is an advantage because you can get that up sooner and up and running sooner. And you would build in the development agreement, once they're operational, you can, you require a community benefit fund contribution. In this case, we are suggesting a 10% would be what we would suggest if that's the way the council wanted to go. And that, the advantage again is, you don't need to wait for a tax measure to pass in November. You'll see, there's a long timeline to get to that point, but I'll go over in a minute, but it advantages, it's a little bit sooner that you could get that revenue stream going if that's the way the council would like to go. And then if a cannabis tax measure was approved later on, the development agreement could And then if a cannabis tax measure was approved later on, the development agreement could rescind essentially the portion of that's related to revenue or the community benefit fund. And then the rest, the provisions in terms of operating and what, whatnot that are in the development agreement would remain. If the tax did not pass, the development agreement would continue until that agreement expired or was terminated. So if the council would like to consider cannabis ordinance, we suggest doing a focused outreach specific to cannabis. We suggest a community workshop where we invite the public to come, learn more about it, and tell us their thoughts and concerns. We suggest using our flash vote tool, which allows us to get a statistically valid sample of the community's feedback and opinions on the subject. We do regular communications updates and have a dedicated project webpage, and we can report back to council at appropriate time the feedback that we received through that effort. So there's a lot of ways that you can get to the point where you have a tax and you are having an operating dispensary. This is just one way. This is the way that was spelled out in your tax, in your staff report. And really, I want to point out, this is a very aggressive schedule, like all the sun, the moon, and stars will all have to align to make this work. So I want to make sure that's clear to the council, to make this work and be, have something operating by end of this year is, is a pretty big lift from a staffing standpoint especially. But also, it really depends on the number, if the council directs us to perceive a certain number. Also, how many applicants there might be. You may have to pick between winners and losers essentially of those that may want to come here. So it could take quite a bit of time. It might take longer than what's shown here. But I'll just kind of walk through that here. And this shows kind of the concurrent processing, like while we're waiting for the tax measure to, if that's the direction you want to go. We'd also kind of be building the nuts and bolts that are, what are needed to allow it, if the tax measure were to pass. So we start with the community engagement, which I went over earlier. Early, in May, we could get to a planning commission meeting where they're reviewing the ordinance that gets into the details of what's required for a dispensary to operate, the number and the regulations in terms of how they operate, and kind of the details that are generally, need a lot of focus. And then the city council would review that next, and then in June, you know, that ordinance would be in place. And then we would open the window for any potential applicants to submit an application to consider, for us to consider. We'd have a 30-day window, which is tight for them to, you know, secure real estate and have all their ducks in a row. And then in there, in July, we would suggest that that would be the opportunity for the council to consider putting the ballot measure on to the ballot. There's flexibility in that, but that's kind of the latest we'd want to do that. And then we would get into August, where the staff from various different departments would have to review the applications. And generally, you can do that 30 days. It can, it can take longer depending on how detailed information is and what type of information we're looking for, how complete their applications are. But in the best case, 30 days would, would be the best we could do that. And then we would suggest taking that to the planning commission in September. And generally, most councils like to chime in and have the final say, so that if that's the pleasure of the council, it'd be a second meeting with the council. So we could have that all done by October. In theory, they could open and operate while they're waiting with a development agreement. And then the general election would take place shortly thereafter, and then that would go into effect if passed by January 2025. So I know that's a lot of dates thrown at you, but that's, and that's just one, again, one way to do it. Another way you could, you could do it is look at cannabis tax first and seeing how, how that goes. And then kind of building the nuts and bolts after the fact, or you can maybe wait a little bit longer to start the nuts and bolts process, which is the ordinance, and then you can consider that and see how the tax passed. So there's a few different ways to do that. This is just the most aggressive way. And I, again, I just want to reiterate, it's, it's tight. So we're seeking council direction, and I mean, the basic question we're asking is, do you want to continue staff work on this to, to advance this? If yes, then we'd recommend placing a cannabis tax on the ballot. So we would again bring back some ballot language for your consideration, and the council can tweak that. And then we need to vote on that to put it on the ballot for November. And then we, depending on the timing and the direction that the council gave, we would work on the ordinance amendments or specific plan amendments that are necessary to, to allow that from a regulatory perspective. And that's really where we would get into the, to the really detailed information about locations, where, where they'd be allowed or not allowed, number allowed in the city, what revenue approach, or, or dollar amounts, or percentage amounts that you'd like, what the security would look like and so forth. So these are the kind of questions we're, we're looking to answer. You know, do you have a thought on the schedule? Do you want to continue that discussion? And I'm available, as well as the rest of the team, for any questions you may have.
Okay, so I've got 14 signup sheets to go, and, and we'll do that. But first, I want to know if there's any preliminary questions or comments from council members, anything over here?
Since this is a study, study session on the subject, I wanted to know if we have any data on crime-related to dispensaries?
I, I don't have data available at the tip of my fingers. I think it depends on the agency and where it's located, and there's a lot of factors that play. So I, I don't know, not sure it would be apples to apples anyway, but I don't know if the chief has more to say on that.
Here he comes. Chief's always got something to say.
Evening, Alex Turcot, Chief of Police. To answer the question, we, we weren't prepared with crime stats today. What we are doing in support of staff study session is reaching out to jurisdictions that currently have dispensaries and seeing best practices for security and any other implications that they have of things that they would recommend that we would include in plans or items that didn't work for them. So we're in that phase right now, and we could report out on that at a later time as well.
Thanks, Chief.
And before you say, anything for the chief? Anybody? Okay. Questions or comments down here? Any?
No.
Right now, any questions, comments?
Yes, absolutely. So.
Turn your mic on.
Casey, my question for you is, I, I'm, I'm not seeing the point of having the planning commission and the council review this. Is there any way we could eliminate that step from the planning commission since we're gonna want to have our input anyway? Do we need to have this, put this through the planning commission?
We, we don't have to. That's kind of our typical process that we do for most planning entitlements. But I, I think, unless the city attorney's give me a look otherwise, but I don't see why we'd have, have to.
I can, depends on where we put it in the ordinance, but if it is gonna be in the zoning code, which is a typical place for it, it would need to go through planning commission.
There's kind of two phases too. So the, the ordinance development, it talks about the why and how you get there. That, that generally would go to the council. I think the use permit process could potentially be something that goes directly to the council. When that's where you're looking at different operators and how they operate, and the, the conditions in which, which those are operating. So there's a chance to skim off sometime there.
In the staff report, it said something about these, what do you call the delivery map? What was that map? The weed map?
Weed maps, mhm.
Okay, so the weed map says that, so the people who deliver are supposed to collect sales tax on the weed they deliver? And then it goes into a, a community pot for the county? Is that what the?
Yeah, it'd be like any other sales tax.
What should we get from that? We know?
We looked. It's hard to, it's not one of the top producers, so it's not, we're not able to kind of discern that from the rest of the data.
Are these people who deliver, are they, are they licensed by the state?
They are, yes, like by Department of Cannabis Control.
The state knows they're out there, but that we don't.
Correct.
So that was one question. Hang on, one, one, we'll head, I need two sets of glasses to read. If you have a development agreement, which you said you could start first, and then you could meanwhile put a tax measure on the ballot and then absorb this development agreement into the tax measure. If you don't want a tax measure, do you need one, or can you just stay with the development agreement forever, never, never? But do you need a tax measure if you agree that the development agreement is plenty?
In theory, you could stay with the development agreement. They generally have a term, so it depends on how you write that. I think you can have terms that extend beyond, and for a very long time. I don't know, city attorney, do you have anything more to add?
Or renewable, or, you know, subject to renewal and review, or whatever?
Yeah, I, I think it'd be, it'd be my recommendation, a development agreement is fine for a period of time. And that could even be 10 or 20 years, but at some point, you do want to have the tax measure in there because it does sunset. And I think you also, it's just, long-term, I think it's a, it's just, it's a better way to go forward.
So when you do a tax measure, then you're swap, switching from the recommended 10% to a 7.5, 7.75% sales tax, or?
You could, you could set it how you want. You could also even put in a tax measure to say it's up to a certain amount of 10%.
Sales tax, we only get a penny.
That's right.
That's not much.
But you're not, yeah, but it, but it would be, you're not, you're not, you don't have to stick to whatever percentage you put. You can't go beyond the tax measure.
Okay, okay, that, that makes sense, but okay, that answers that question. Thank you. Oh, one other question. Do we, do we license cultivation? I know that we can only cultivate indoors in Citrus Heights and not outdoors. Do we license that? Do people come and say, I want to grow marijuana?
There, there is a permit process for limited plants, I believe. I'd have to check with the chief on that, but I, in terms of big cultivation, that's currently banned as, as well at the, at this point.
I thought you could have so many plants.
You can have, I think, six plants is the number, if I remember correctly, yeah. So this, so that is allowed under the law. You can, right now, large-scale, like greenhouse-type of cultivation is not permitted in the city.
Okay.
Is that it?
Thanks.
Just a couple of clarifications on the 600-foot mark. So 600 feet for schools, daycares, and youth centers. Does that include private schools?
I think we can write it how we, we want it. I'm not 100% sure on what the state, how they look at it, but we can write our own rules how you want to define it.
And then that might lead to my second question. Does that include private daycare?
We can write it how you want it.
I don't even know how we could do anything with, if we included private daycare. You know, that's just everywhere, everywhere. And the youth center, I guess, is not an issue, but, and then if we did a, a, a bigger distance, say 750 feet, and because of geography and how something lays out, let's say that it didn't really make sense to do 750 feet, and, and we wanted to allow somebody to do less than that, but still 600 feet, we could still do that, right? We could get a variance in this kind of process?
The city can choose their own distance requirements. I believe we can be more stringent or more loose than what the state requires.
Okay, and then the final thing on the maximum number of stores, that's something that we can control, right? We, we can say two stores, 10 stores, store on every corner.
That's correct.
All right. Okay, that's it for now. Any other questions, comments right now? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call up speakers, gonna start with Joe Romero. Please remember, you have five minutes. You're not required to take five minutes, but if you'd like to, you can take five minutes, and we'll listen to you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, city staff, city manager, everybody, everybody in the community as well. I'm standing here before you as a cannabis owner in the city of Woodland. So, you know, some of the slides need to be updated a little bit because it's happening now. They have already, you know, picked the groups, and so we were the top one group. So we look, you know, forward to being a long-term partner with the city, with the community, supporting community efforts, but also business here in Citrus Heights. So I grew up in Woodland, and, you know, Citrus Heights reminds me of Woodland a lot. And I know you have a lot more, a little bit more population. So as far as, you know, what we're here talking today about is tax, right? I noticed there was a 10% community tax. In the city of Woodland, there's a, it's a 5% tax. And the reason why is, if you're overtax the businesses, then you really will be flat, like he had mentioned. So the city of Sacramento is a 4%. So if you're a business looking at, okay, where should I open, you might not come here. And then the city of Dixon has a 15% tax. They only have two stores. So other companies are not gonna go, even if it's an I-80 corridor. So just, you know, I, I do like that it's gonna go to the planning commission so that that can get vetted out, look at, you know, what's really needed. And I know taxes are really needed for the revenue for the cities, especially during COVID. And now, you know, department's needing more funding, city's growing, obviously. But then also foot traffic for, for the businesses around these dispensaries. It's really important for them. Some of them, you know, are used to their daily customers. But then if you add a dispensary next to it with 200, 300 people coming there and then saying, hey, I might need a haircut. I might need my tires changed, or whatever, get a pizza. And then, talking about crime, I have the answers to that. I know the chief came up. But with crime, dispensaries actually have been shown to decrease crime. Whether it's homelessness, local petty theft crime, security guards are there 24 hours if you want. They could be there till they close or open, an hour before, hour after. But usually, security cameras are on 24/7, and they could be tied to law enforcement. And then just investing in the community, you know, with our community groups here. We like to introduce ourselves tonight, but then also get to work. I like the aggressive plan that, you know, that he had mentioned. And then just past experiences in Woodland, going through that was a five-year, seven-year process. For the city to not receive taxes during that seven-year period when the city of Davis had five going, and they're receiving millions of dollars of tax revenue, was a mistake. And so now that, you know, that, that's been corrected. I'd like to see all these cities do the same thing. It actually reduces the traffic from the, the deliveries. Because if customers are like, I could go to this legit place, I can go in, I don't have to call or wait four or five hours for someone to deliver. And then also, the city's missing out on that local tax. So the delivery guys are coming in, selling with no ramifications or no tax dollars coming here. You know, that's, I think, something else that should be looked at that in a positive note. So I'm here to support you guys, obviously. And then zoning. I would be careful with zoning for businesses because some business owners might be against it, or might say no. That was my experience finding a location. So if you cut the city in half with a green zone map, then half of those business owners can't even have the opportunity to do this. So it should be the whole city, because the groups are gonna have a hard, hard time finding someone that owns the building outright. Because if, if, say the owner has a finance through the bank, they can't do this. So a lot of people that have banknotes that are owners here, they won't be able to, just because of that simple fact, even if they wanted to. And then the, the zoning for the fee, it's up to you guys, but also competition is good. And having, you know, your experience with, with everything, and hopefully, just going forward, I thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask you a question? Ask a question. So when it's delivered to the house, is there a delivery fee on top of the cost of the product?
It, it's, it, the, the state law is for delivery allowed in all jurisdictions.
Is there an extra fee for that delivery?
Not for the city, no.
For the driver, for the seller?
Yeah, they have their own separate fees, but as far as like the local tax, it's tied to wherever.
I'm only asking about delivery fee.
Yeah, that, it's tied to wherever their.
If my food to my house, they.
Wherever their business is tied to, their address, that's who's getting the, the local. So they could drive 20 miles from Sacramento.
It doesn't answer the question. That's okay.
But yeah, their tax is gonna go to the other city.
Thank you very much. Kathy Morris.
Mr. Mayor, councilpeople, I, I feel very strange. I am speaking against this motion. I do not believe this is a business that we should open right now. I'm, feel very strange saying that because I am basically pro-business. I think that Citrus Heights is a good area for businesses. I like to shop locally, and I think everybody does. So I think more shopping locally, more businesses locally, but not this business. And my concern is the amount of regulations, the amount of development, the amount of, maybe zoning, maybe not, that would have to be done. I will admit that I came of age in the 60s, and so obviously, I have a bit of experience with this particular drug. I am not, I also was addicted to cigarettes. I know about addiction. I know about drugs. I know about all that stuff. This isn't a business that I think would be good for our city. We can do a lot more business development. We can do a lot more business development that I think would be much more effective. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Next up, Michael Lagomarcino.
Good evening, members of the City Council. I've lived in this city since 1978. My three kids, three daughters, all went to school here. We've never had, I never had to worry about drugs in the city. Now granted, this is medical marijuana. Okay, fine. However, I don't believe, like Kathy said, that this is something that we want in our city. I've talked to several folks that also are homeowners here. I'm not talking about apartment people, because they're transitory, as far as I'm concerned. They're in, they're out. They go to where they can get the best deal for their home. But for the homeowners, I don't think this is the proper city to allow a dispensary to be open. In 1920, or I'm sorry, in 2020, we voted against it. And I think if it was to go before the voters again, a majority of the people would say, no, we don't need it. And I don't know why it's being brought back up. People spoke once, and I think that should have given you, members of the City Council, an idea of where the city folks stand on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Council, for having me. Appreciate how you're doing, Brother Tim, you're doing, Portia, good to see you all, Mr. Mayor. I'm coming here as an activist, social justice activist, a member of the community. I've been a part of this community now for three and a half years, three and a half years now. And the reason I wanted to come here is because I wanted to stress the importance of the money being used for the community, underserved minority communities. And some of these cannabis networks that are here today have been supporting families such as myself's and other impacted families for a while now, asking for nothing. And my brother Brandon, who is here today with me, when he called me and asked me to come out here, you know, usually he don't call me for much, but when he called me, I knew it was important. I knew it was something heavy on his mind. And he called me last, last minute, and I was, and I was almost not gonna come. And then when he told me that, you know, bringing cannabis here to the Citrus Heights area could boost the economy, could help with the roads, could help with better schools, could help bring some money into this economy. I asked him, I said, well, well, how much, Brandon? How much money are we talking? And he said, you know, I don't know for sure, but I know the city of Sacramento benefited greatly off what they did with the cannabis, or what they're doing with the cannabis there right now. So, you know, my thing about with this cannabis is, because I've never really stood up for recreational or medical marijuana. But I do believe we, as a nation, we as a country, are moving forward. And I believe slow progress is better than no progress. I believe taking the steps to make sure these cannabis clubs aren't next to our schools, aren't next to our senior citizen homes, you know, are right next to our churches. I think that's important to us as a community. But I also think, you know, seeing some type of extra income coming to the city, better infrastructure, better schools, more support for nonprofits like mine in this city, who want to stay in this city, who need the extra support, who could benefit from the extra support, you know, I honestly think, you know, slow progress is better than no progress. And, you know, on, on a, on a different level, on a, on a, on a higher level, on a higher note, I do want to see myself coming in here more often and getting to know you guys, seeing how we could work together on more substantive change in our community. I'm all for the DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I believe social justice, social equity, and getting behind this cannabis promotes that on not just some levels, but all levels. I thank you for your time. I thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Brandon Bolton.
Thank you all for your time. It's great to be here, and thank you guys for having this discussion. I'm Brandon Bolton. I'm the board member of Mission Green, the founder of the United Core Alliance, and also Cannabis Equity Pop, Cannabis Equity Policy Council. We are a criminal justice organization, all of them are criminal justice organizations, that really fight to secure the release of those who are still incarcerated for low-level cannabis offenses. But as well, you know, I think that's the one thing that gets lost in this conversation as well, is those who are still impacted for, you know, for buying and consuming something that is medicinal and is, you know, becoming a larger topic, as Stefante said, you know, across the country. And, you know, as people continue to grow and consume more, it's, you know, they're either gonna go to an illicit person, or they're gonna go to a secure and, you know, a secure place where they feel safe and comfortable, people are going to buy it. You know, like the deliveries, as you, as you've mentioned, Vice Mayor, you know, that, there's a lot of tax monies that is, that's leaving here. There's a lot of people, like, we could almost pull the data on how many orders are coming from Citrus Heights. We could get those from tech companies and really almost see and track and try to equate what that is, and I'd like to, to help with that. But I just wanted to tell you, I am, I am grateful, again, you know, that you guys have the courage and the compassion to have this conversation again. I know that it is a, it, it can be tough and difficult conversation to bring up, you know, but I'm proud of the city and its leadership for, for hosting it. You know, and allowing the community to engage on all sides, from all sectors, because I think that's how we build a inclusive and equitable and just and fair, but also profitable market. I just, you know, too, and I wanted to ask a question as well, you know, to what and who that entity might be if we were to speed up that approach, right? Or is that, have those entities, you know, approached the community? Have they been supporting different nonprofits? Have they proven themselves to do that? Because that's one thing, you know, we're looking at, if we look at states, or cities and states, different municipalities like San Diego, Colorado, that started without thinking of those individuals that are incarcerated and beyond, which a lot of people have been. Then we almost don't have space. So I'm in those conversations as well. We, in the county of San Diego, there's, their zoning is so restricted and so saturated, there is no market share for underserved, or even members in communities to participate. And so I think as we create, you know, and as you guys create in the, in the community, as we create and draft, what we'd like to see, I think, you know, starting off small is always a thing, too. I think, you know, you could start off with one and decide more, pull data metrics from that. You know, it's just, I feel like it's the partners, like, who are they, what, what is their mission, what can they accomplish? And, and trust as well. Can they build the trust with the community? Can they host, like, public discussions on their own? Can they allow a conversation where we can find mutual benefit for all parties that are involved? And including, and I think everyone should be included, even the individuals who are opposing. I think that's honestly most important, too. So that way, we are addressing their concerns and building a better industry. This industry is still growing. And lastly, I just wanted to say, lastly, oh, I guess I, we're gonna do all, but lastly, I just wanted to say, thank you all for your time. And thank you, again, for your courage and to have this conversation. It, it does, it does mean a lot.
Thank you, sir, very much. Next up, I'll call up the Honorable Former Council Member Albert Fox. Sir, you have five minutes, just five minutes, just.
Oh, shucks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Mine will actually be short and sweet. I want to boil this thing back down to what we're talking about tonight, and that's whether or not the study is useful, and whether or not, as a couple of folks have said, this is about getting money to fund, you know, road repairs and things in Citrus Heights. A possibility is one that I've heard has been floated from, from the council members. There's a couple of others that I've, that I've heard mentioned. But I'm more concerned about the fact that we have already gone through this study, we've already gone through it with the city, as Mr. Lagomarcino said. And those discussions were very complete, and I think were very impactful on what the decision that was made. I'm gonna read what I, I pulled out today, because I did some research. Cannabis dispensaries have long been seen as inconsistent with health, safety, and security of our community. The previous actions of the City Council to prohibit such businesses were thoughtfully weighed against the potential benefits, including tax revenues to the city. The potential benefits of this proposed study falls moot in light of the reality of the legal cannabis industry's declining impact of sales tax revenues across the entire state, and I will go with some data with that in just a moment. One just has to read the most recent studies, reports by MJ Biz, which is Marijuana Biz Daily, or North Course Business Journal, to see the failures of marijuana dispensaries to be the sax tail, sax, sales tax bonanza dreamed by the politicians at both the state and local government levels. The recent claim that it is going to be a sufficient resource for road repair funding is highly questionable at best, and is not supported by the statewide reports of dispensary closures, failures to pay or delinquent payments of sales and excise tax revenues. You will find support of these basic findings as follows. At least 14 cities and counties in the state, including key consumer markets such as Los Angeles, San Francisco, as well as less populated production-focused areas like Calaveras and Humboldt Counties, have reduced or eliminated local sales tax, business or cultivation taxes over the past year, according to research compiled by the Hirsch Jane of Anata Strategies of Los Angeles-based consultancy. The trend reflects the growing acceptance among elected officials that legal marijuana in the state's roughly $6 billion market is simply too expensive for California consumers who can patronize a still-thriving illicit market. Tax cuts reflect a stark departure from the attitude of legalization's early days, when local governments saw marijuana industry tax revenue as a source of revenue to backfill budgets and avoid more difficult conversations regarding spending priorities. Among the cities that have cut taxes in the past year, Berkeley, where lawmakers voted in July to extend an across-the-board local tax exemption until 2025. Cathedral City in Southern California cut the retail tax from 10% to 5% and further cuts on cultivation and other businesses to offset these businesses closing, going out of business, and losing revenues. Long Beach, which cut local taxes for social equity businesses, is offering further benefits for small companies to meet certain so-called good employer requirements. Palm Desert cut a grocery receipts tax on retailers from 10% to 5%. San Francisco, which delayed imposing a local tax rate entirely, Santa Ana, cut taxes across the board. Counties that recent cuts include Calaveras, Humboldt, Mendocino, Monterey, San Luis Obispo, and Sonoma Counties. Cannabis sales in California are subject to two main taxes. The state's basic sales tax, which starts at 725 and can reach as high as 10% in certain jurisdictions, and a 15% excise tax, unique to cannabis, which retailers must collect from customers and remit to the state. And the state's not gonna share that with you, as we well know. And I think Vice Mayor Costa said simply, we get, on sales tax, we get 1%. 1% is not gonna be a whole lot of money. The North Bay Business Journal, December 2023, California cannabis tax revenue dipped about 6% quarter-to-quarter from summer to fall, totaling $269.3 million in three months, ending September the 30th. Department of Tax and Free Administration reported, I'm sorry, in 2022, third-quarter revenue came in at 25, 252.2 million, at a time when the industry feared a potential collapse amid pressure from state and local taxes, stiff competition from the illicit market, and a plummeting wholesale price. It appears from statements from some, they have already decided that they would support dispensaries in Citrus Heights. Prior to public comment or input by the community implies that feelings, desires, or support of the community is unnecessary. And I urge you that if you're going to go forward with this, at least make sure that those are considered. May I have one more moment? Thank you. The question when is, is, who does the council represent in the community of interest in, of an industry that feeds the same drug dependency and direct impact our schools, students, and homeless populations? There is no evidence in current publicity available, data, publicly available data, that the sales tax income would have a significant positive impact on our city. Thank you.
I knew you couldn't do it in five minutes. Next up is Mark Mabatos. Forgive me if I got that last name wrong.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Mark Mabutos. I am the owner of Metro Cannabis Dispensary. I'm a local small business who is here today to support staff recommendation to uplift the ban on cannabis retail. I know this opportunity will provide this city with more opportunity for employment, tax benefits, and expand opportunity for local entrepreneurs. As a retail dispensary owner, I could tell you firsthand that the legal cannabis market has not only changed my life, but the life of my family and local community. Allowing retail dispensaries in the city of Citrus Heights will give much-needed access to medical cannabis, at the same time as bringing much-needed tax revenue to the city. I want to say thank you again for considering this opportunity. I know that there's been a lot of people that are coming to speak against this matter, but the truth is, there's a lot of data and information that proves a lot of this stuff that is being said is false. And I hope that you will look to the data and look to the information from local communities such as Sacramento, Davis, and see that the impact that it has had on not only just our local community, but our black and brown and minority entrepreneurs, who've been able to create generational wealth from this opportunity as well. As somebody who has advocated all the way from SoCal to Long Beach to Sacramento to other emerging markets, I do want to let you know that there has been changes in those local communities, and people's lives have been changed by this, both for the medical purposes, but also the opportunity to create new entrepreneur opportunities for their family and the local community as well. Thank you, and have a great day.
Thank you, sir, very much. Next up will be the Honorable Former Council Member and Mayor Jeanne Bruins.
Good evening, Mayor Daniels, Vice Mayor Carpinsky Costa, and councilmembers. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. As a nearly 40-year member of this community, which I will celebrate later this year, this issue is very important to me. When voters legalized recreational marijuana, the City of Citrus Heights City Council thoughtfully approved a municipal code prohibiting the opening and operation of marijuana dispensaries in Citrus Heights. And I was part of that panel at that time. And our reason was to protect our citizens on the level of health, safety, and well-being, not only for our citizens, but for our business community as well. Circumstances have changed since then, making this municipal code, as it stands today, even more important. Crime is up everywhere. Homelessness, as you know, has exploded around us and is being felt within our city limits as well. Our children are less safe today than they were four years ago, when we voted on this ordinance. Marijuana has become a much more lethal drug than it was when I was young, and when, as Kathy Nemora said, when we were young people of the 50s, 60s, and 70s. It is the most genetically altered crop in California, which makes it a much stronger substance than it was before. Cities were mentioned that offer cannabis dispensaries, but let me mention the ones that do not. They include Roseville, Rockland, Placer County, Folsom, Auburn, Lincoln, Loomis, Rancho Cordova, Elk Grove, and even Sacramento County. All of them prohibit marijuana dispensaries, and Roseville has even considered, has written in their laws that it is a misdemeanor to open one. So what does that do if we are surrounded by communities that disallow marijuana dispensaries? If we go forward with this ordinance and we, we write it into our books? It makes us a target. It makes us a target for those who want to use this drug. We know it affects not only the homeless, but it affects children. It affects people that can't find it somewhere else. What's the motivation behind doing this? It's all revenue. It's all revenue. And I recognize that our roads and our streets need to be maintained, need to be upgraded, need to be addressed. But this is not the solution. In the research that I've done, and the people that I've talked to, it's clear that the amount of revenue that is promised is just a fraction of what is actually realized. I've talked to a lot of people, a lot of businesses, and a lot of commercial property owners in our city in the last few days. 100% of them oppose going forward with this. Talked to one today who, who shared a conversation he had with one of our councilmembers. Talked to one today who, who shared a conversation he had with one of our council members, who basically told him that the homeless situation that he sees from his business community doesn't really exist. I think we need to get a pulse of what the community wants, so I'm really happy to see that the direction the council's taking is going to include community input. I want you to listen to what the community has to say. We, as a community, identified ourselves as not a good place for cannabis marijuana to be sold on a retail level, and I believe that the reasons that existed then are even stronger today. And if you'll put it out to the community and ask for their input and really listen to what they say, I think the direction will be very clear, that this is not something we want in Citrus Heights. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Sean Kieran.
Good day. Thank you very much for having us. My name is Sean Kieran. I'm CEO of the Weed for Warriors. We're one of the largest disabled veteran groups, me being a disabled veteran. I was just a grunt enlisted, not a Colonel. So very congratulations, by the way. And what we're really about is we're trying to deal with the suicide and overdose epidemic that is hitting all of us. And this last year, we've seen the suicide number hit high at fifty thousand, and a hundred thousand Americans died. That means they're not at the table, the holiday table, this last Christmas, Hanukkah, whatever you celebrate, family members weren't there. And what we see, and you see Davis come out with this research, where cannabis dispensaries exist, we see lower overdose deaths, and it makes sense. Our vets, when they come back and they're plowed with opiates, I would urge everyone to read the Health and Human Services that just recommended Schedule III, that cannabis, their own admission, our federal government's now saying, it's not the same as heroin, it's not the same as fentanyl, it's not the same as alcohol. We're not losing people from it. So it's a safer substitute, and we exist for that reason, and we work with the industry. We're nonprofits, we don't pay ourselves at all, we get a check from the government. We work with the dispensaries to do what's SB thirty-four, which is give free medicine to veterans. That, to be honest, if we're not giving it to them legally, the problem is people are buying cannabis today in citrus hearts, on the black market, delivery, not all of its legal delivery, there's a lot of non-legal delivery, you're not getting any taxes. Taxes is, and I agree with the honorable ex-city council member, taxes have been overstated, the benefits, along with the dangers, so let me point out, in a state audit, there hasn't been a single audit that allowed an underage child into a legal dispensary. Can't say the same with the black market. And the drugs are available in our school today. And if we want to get rid of that, you've got to get rid of the black markets, and the only way you do that is to create a legal, regulated marketplace. So I would urge you, at the end of the day, to embrace what makes this country great, and that's our, you know, entrepreneurs who are out there, providing consumers what they want, and they're going to get it whether we give it to them or not, they're just going to get on, which increases crime in your schools and the drugs. And so this is really about public safety, and I know, listen, my dad was a captain in Vietnam, and he talks, a bunch of Weed for Warriors guys, and he's talking about how he used to bust the potheads on guard duty, right? So I understand what people's hesitation to it, but cannabis is saving lives where it's available, because instead of going to get alcohol and I'm getting, and taking it with the Xanax I got from the VA, that's deadly. I am now smoking cannabis, and guess what? They're falling asleep on their couch with a bag of Doritos. They're not causing problems in the community. And there's a lot of mental health issues out there, so let's not confuse cannabis with addiction to serious deadly drugs and the criminal element and the homeless element that has existed. Like you said, you denied this four years ago, and as one lady just said, our kids are more dangerous. So is it cannabis, or what's really going on? And for the police chief back here, they just did a study that when cops and our first responders retire, their average lifespan is three years. We have an epidemic of suicide and overdose, and we need a safer substitute and an alternative, and millions of our veterans and millions of our first responders and people who are around us every day are safely choosing cannabis. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mark Carrillo.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you for having me. Appreciate you guys. For this, retail dispensaries need to be available. I've been helping, I grew up, Foothill Farms right down the road, been in, been in this area a very long time, since ninety-nine, went to the Marine Corps, sort of two combat deployments in Fallujah, Iraq, came back drinking a fifth of vodka a day, didn't want to fall back into cannabis, right? But as the studies have come out, my brothers and sisters have come to me and told me cannabis saved their lives. I dabbled back into it, found it did, started giving away freedom to my veteran brothers and sisters and family members. End of twenty-fourteen, I reached out to a local dispensary, The Sanctuary in Sacramento, and asked, how can I give out more free stuff? This was back in two fifteen days, legally came into the shop and was giving away free stuff. Very soon after, realized that it was a community and fellowship, camaraderie and fellowship that people were looking for, and started throwing chapter meetings to bring bodies together. There are good actors and bad apples in this, in this industry, so really going through the due diligence and talking to people, talking to your community, and, and working through these issues, they're, you know, it's not going to be an easy steps, there's going to be plenty of roadblocks, but there are plenty of people that have gone through this in other cities, other states, and so we're here to help you guys. Anyone, please reach out and talk, listen to everybody, talk to everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, India Haynes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is India Haynes. I am originally from the Bay Area, and I'm twenty-nine years old. I want to give full transparency to say, I did not expect, I consider myself to be a regular person, so I don't understand how I ended up here tonight in a suit jacket, speaking to you all, but I really appreciate you guys taking the time to listen. I am originally from the Bay Area, like I said, and I grew up pretty regular, like I said before. I'm somebody that is not necessarily underprivileged, but I am someone that did face hardships kind of growing up, financial hardships, come from a loving family, but also a broken household, like many people who lived in my area. And I've also faced a lot of challenges when it comes to career building, because I'm a woman, I'm also minority, I'm black, and so I've had issues with that. And that was until I started in two thousand and fourteen at a dispensary and got my start in the cannabis industry. And I originally just wanted another job because I was working at Subway, and they didn't pay me enough, and I quit, and then a dispensary landed in my lap, and I had an entry-level position, and it all worked out fine. I thought it was going to be something short-term. Six years later, I was still there because I ended up seeing what it really did for the city, what it really did for the people that needed it, what it did for my family. I have a mom who faces an inflammatory issue, it's called angioedema. She doesn't smoke, I don't smoke, and yet somehow, we got her to use the product, and we've seen benefits from it. But I ended up having to leave that company because I did a lot of work, and I was there for six years. Like I said, I made seventeen dollars and twenty-five cents, and as a nineteen-year-old, because I was able to be there at nineteen at the time, I said, this is not going to work. Seventeen twenty-five is just not feasible. So I ended up relocating to Sacramento, and I had an opportunity at a bunch of different roles, but I started with The Sanctuary, who Mark just previously mentioned. And that dispensary, getting started there, it changed the direction and the trajectory of my life completely. Like I said, I'm a regular person. I'm not someone that has a master's degree or a bachelor's degree. I'm not someone that was born with a silver spoon. I'm a regular person, and so there were a lot of challenges and experience gaps that I had when I first started at The Sanctuary, but that company, in that industry, took time to fully develop me. They took time to teach me the reporting and the financial issues that I didn't know how to do. They taught me leadership development, and within two years, starting in two thousand and nineteen, I had been promoted five times. I was a sales lead, I was a sales manager, I ended up in human resources, and now, a couple of years later, about to make five years with the company, I get to call myself India Haynes, the general manager of a cannabis dispensary, one of the best ones in Sacramento, and I'm really, really pleased with that. There's a lot of stigma's attached to cannabis, I get that, I'm not a user of the product, but I will say that I've seen so much that it's done for not only my family, but the people around me. And so I always, now that I'm running a dispensary, try to pay it forward with all of the development that they've given me. It was parabolic growth. I shot up like a rocket ship when they taught me everything, and my value as a person, it truly did increase, and so now I'm doing the same thing within the community. So The Sanctuary is based in Del Paso Heights, it's in Sacramento, it's an underprivileged area, so we see a lot of issues there, but when it comes to the onboarding, the hiring, all of that stuff, I try to give them the same chance that they give me. And so I don't necessarily let the resumes that people have limit them, I don't let whatever their upbringing was limit them, I truly look at the person, and I say, you know what? I've learned everything that I need to learn, and I can develop people, and I've truly seen that happen with my experience there. We've also come into the area that we're in now, and we didn't want to just take, take, take. We've given so much to the community, so we've partnered with nonprofit organizations such as Weed for Warriors, and we volunteered over three hundred hours to the community. We've been to a bunch of community outreach events, and we just are really trying to make a positive impact, and I'm seeing that happen. Even with the local businesses around us, there's a soul food restaurant down the street from us called Tori's Place, I highly recommend it, they've seen an increase in their sales just because of the foot traffic that we have. And I know that security is one of the things that people are really afraid of. We have an impeccable security system, twenty-four-hour security, a third-party company looking at how we operate things. We have created over three hundred jobs, or excuse me, over a hundred jobs within the community, one of them being a patrol situation where we have people just scoping out what's going on with the, the market and what's going on around us to make sure that everything is safe and that our consumers are not causing any issues, and it's been a great benefit to us. So I know I have a limited amount of time left, but I just wanted to say, I'm completely for retail coming into the dispensary, and it's, excuse me, into this city, and it's going to offer more than just sales tax. You will make better people, you will see that people are just overall going to become better, and they have access to alternative medicine. I just urge that if it does come into Citrus Heights, you have to have the right dispensary. You have to have the right integral leader to be here to do that, and you just have to have the right partnership overall, and I know that if I can provide that, other people might too, but maybe not as good as us. So I just, I urge it, and if any of you guys are ever interested to see what we do, I encourage you guys, ask us for a tour, we'll give you a tour, it's a great facility, it's very professional, and I think that you guys would enjoy the time with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, Natalie Price.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members, and City Staff. I hope today, Council, oh, my name is Natalie Price, Amy. I hope today Council provides feedback and direction so that staff can proceed with necessary municipal code updates to allow retail cannabis businesses as set forth in the staff report. I support this initiative because, as referenced in the staff report, moving forward with a dispensary aligns with the Citrus Heights City Council's strategic plan objectives, goals to diversify for a resilient economy and maintain and enhance fiscal stability. It will bring in new tenants to hard-to-rent locations and bring with it some wins for the community. We are not here today to discuss the legality of cannabis consumption in Citrus Heights. Numerous legislative acts have already determined that whether for medical or recreational use, for persons of a certain age or certain medical needs, cannabis is permitted in Citrus Heights. Furthermore, as pointed out in the staff report, since two thousand and twenty, cannabis delivery has been permitted in Citrus Heights. Cannabis is already in our city, it's in our neighborhoods. The question before us today is whether or not our city will take advantage of a fiscal opportunity and provide equal access to medical dispensaries within city limits. Saying yes to allowing one or two cannabis dispensaries within our I-80 corridors is a win. It's a win in securing funds towards the astronomical road repairs. It's a win for the fifty-plus jobs it will generate in our city. It's a win for those in Placer County and surrounding who will likely now travel to Citrus Heights for their cannabis needs, and those even farther, who may now receive delivery services in their region. It is a win for the many medical cannabis consumers already in our city who have been traveling thirty-plus minutes to access their pharmacies. I don't want to bring the Me Too movement to the dais, but I do want to talk about the importance of dispensary access for some of those who choose cannabis for their medical needs. There is a woman in our community, she's lived here over twelve years. She was gang raped at twelve years of age. She was pinned down by four men and had a loaded handgun inserted inside of her. This twelve-year-old child has had complex PTSD with suicidal ideation ever since. She sees her own death multiple times a day. This child grew up and became a mother. When her young children would put their hands in her face, she would panic. She would sob uncontrollably when they wanted to sit on her lap, and she turned to psychology for help. She was given pills that she couldn't miss a dose and had to take every day. They led her to becoming a human shell. She had no emotion, no libido, she wasn't present for her family, her friends, she had no aspirations and found herself unable to serve the community that she loves. These pills eventually caused her heart to give out as she hit the floor of a convention center, but luckily she survived. She was determined from that point to rise without Big Pharma's poison, and most days this woman soars. But some days, some days, there's an officer as a guest speaker at a community meeting, and as she is seated and he stands, she finds herself face-to-face with the gun in his holster. This woman remembers the hot shells hitting her face from the bullet casings. When she's working in the community doing a cleanup or planting a tree, the smell of a man's sweat triggers her parasympathetic system, and on the inside, she's outrunning a grizzly bear, and she's wanting to end the memories in a very final way. On those days, this woman chooses to inhale from a concentrate to stay safe, to come down to baseline quickly, within seconds. This woman doesn't want at-home delivery. She doesn't want to explain the little brown bag and the person in her driveway to her children. Her round-trip commutes to even the closest dispensaries are burdensome with her intense schedule, and her mental health deteriorates. Access to cannabis dispensaries matters. It matters for this Citrus Heights resident and many more like her. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Next up, Jimmy Bobak. Hope I got that last name right, Jimmy.
It was close.
Okay.
My last one?
Uh, no.
We'll make it quick then. Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Staff. In two thousand and twenty-two, I can't believe, July fourteen, that's before you talk about cannabis, it was not an agenda item at the time. I'm so excited that we're talking about it today as an agenda item. For those who don't know me or remember me, my name is Jimmy Bobak. I own Helios Distribution. We are a distribution company. Absolutely. We are a distribution company located in the city of Sacramento. We, on average, have about fourteen vehicles on the road every day, and we deliver to eight hundred retail locations from Mexico border up to the Oregon border. Over the last six years, we've been operational since two thousand and eighteen. We have seen a lot of success through various retailers, brands, other licensees. Unfortunately, we've seen a lot of failures, and so I stood up a couple of years ago to talk to you about the benefits, I thought.
I mean, we're still having some trouble hearing you.
Oh, really? Okay, I'll bend over a little taller. I, I'll get down here. You know, I'm here to talk today about, you know, really, I would probably give you fifty things, but I only have five minutes today, so I just wanted to bring top three things that I've seen over the last six years, that I thought if you choose to move forward with, you know, allowing cannabis within Citrus Heights, some things that I would think, even choosing an operator, would, would, you would find successful. Number one, limited license. We have found, or I've seen numerous times where cities or different parts of the state have opened up licenses to retailers, and they tend to over-license, and what you normally have is, let's say a city, given the population, can maybe only take one or two, or would be sufficient, one or two dispensaries, you end up having maybe eight to ten. What we see is you have about half of them losing money and half of them doing okay. And I think if those cities chose to maybe put one or two dispensaries within that given area, I think it's less competitive. And on that note, I think that when you talk about taxes, if, if there was a smaller number of dispensaries that were successful, they could probably take on a little bit higher of a tax rate for the city and still be able to manage that within the margin. So I think when looking at how many licenses would be allowable in the city, taking a look at, you know, maybe some other, other cities and what they've done, and allowing sort of a limited license. I think number two, this is really important, is finding a genuine operator who does it for the right reasons. We work a lot with big chain retailers, even mom-and-pop shops, big multi-state operators that, you know, they tend to hire consultants, attorneys, lobbyists to obtain these licenses. There's some that are really great, but there's also some that, you know, they're so busy in other parts of the state, other parts of even the country, that sometimes those licenses, if awarded, go dormant. So they're not actively trying to get them open, they're sort of just on a license acquisition kind of movement, trying to add value to the company. So if you did provide it to one of those, you know, bad apples, my concern would be that it would, we're talking about a tight timeline, that potentially it could delay that timeline because they might not have, you know, full, full ownership or full, like, head of steam towards getting that, that license open. I believe in the most successful operators that we've seen are ones that partner with the city day one and really build a foundation with the people and the community. Number three is really finding an operator who has a track record of good business. This, this one actually kind of hurts. I don't know if you guys know this, one of the biggest cannabis distributors last year had gone out of business, it was, name was Herbal, H-E-R-B-L. And one of the amazing, main reasons they're in receivership now is they became insolvent with a ten-plus-million-dollar accounts receivable. And me being a distributor, a competitor of theirs, we were fortunate to actually onboard some of their brands, but now- were fortunate to actually onboard some of their brands, but now, you know, I, full transparency, we have a seven-figure accounts receivable as well. I have numerous judgments filed against various retailers in California. And, you know, finding people who have a track record of doing good business, I think is very important. There are so many good retailers. I don't mean to be a person that's talking bad. Like, it's an amazing opportunity. It's amazing industry. However, I have seen a lot of things, and there's certain operators who build a model around taking money from the smaller brands. And unfortunately, we have been victims of it. I've seen brands who have been victims of it, even in our portfolio. So it's really important to do research on the correct operator and making sure they have a good track record because they will take money, they sell the product, they use, they have no intention of paying that product, and then use that money to fund expansion. And so that's a model that hurts the industry. That's a model that really makes our job extremely tough. So like Indy had said prior, if you have any questions with like a tour of my facility or follow-up, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. But I do appreciate everyone's time today.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Jacob Schmidt.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. And thank you, India. That was amazing. Wow. We for Warriors. You guys are amazing. I'm the owner of the Sanctuary Dispensary in Sacramento. Having started my first job in the city of Citrus Heights at 12, I'm really excited that you guys are having this conversation. Operating a legal dispensary in Sacramento, in the Sacramento region since 2010, we aim to be a responsible contributing member of the community with a proven track record. Our commitment includes creating local jobs, fostering community engagement, and collaborating in any license process that the city devises. As an owner-operator, this company and our people are prepared to invest capital, human resources, time, as a qualified partner. From location, local contractors, to marketing, local staffing, we are dedicated to making a positive impact in the city of Citrus Heights. Our track record reflects responsible business practices, tax compliance, banking, positive community engagement. I'd like to invite each member of the council out for a tour as well. We are confident that with your support, we can contribute significantly to the city of Citrus Heights and any goals that you guys set forth. I believe that we can build something that we both be proud of. So I appreciate you guys' time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that's the last of the speakers that I have. I'll ask staff if they have any clarifications or any points that were heard.
Mayor, I do have one.
I always forget this. This is technology. I can't remember this.
I do have one written comment.
Sorry.
And our agenda states any written comment should be submitted by 4:00 PM. We did receive some written comment after 4:00 PM. Those copies have been provided to the city council, but I will read the one that was received prior to 4:00 PM. And it is from Maria Iristegui. I apologize if I missed pronounce that. And they state, "I support that the city council lift the ban on cannabis retail businesses. Currently, Citrus Heights is losing a significant amount of revenue to the city of Sacramento by continuing this ban. The potential of having this revenue stream in the city of Citrus Heights can be used for many things, including improving roads, infrastructure, and issues pertaining to the unhoused, and homelessness and other social services that are in need of financial support. I encourage the city council to direct staff to revisit this issue and move forward on approving a pathway for the city to attain a revenue stream and create jobs and infill currently open commercial space by pursuing the implementation of opening up cannabis retail in our community." And that concludes the written comment.
Okay. There we go. Anything? Okay, Council comments, questions? Portia, anything? I'll start down here. Nothing? Oh, go ahead.
No.
Nothing? Yeah, okay. Jane?
No.
Questions? Are we doing this?
We're just doing any questions or comments at this time. Tim, anything?
Yeah. So, you know, lots of people in this room would be, probably remember that I came out pretty vehemently opposed to Measure M. The concern that I have certainly moving forward here is our infrastructure deterioration. I think that, that I think we should explore this as an option. I don't know. I would request, Al, if you have this information you can, you are reading, I'd love to take a look at it. And so, as far as I'm concerned, this issue's still on the table for me, just because from a business and a revenue standpoint, I'd like to know, look at the data and say, hey, yeah, this makes sense or it doesn't make sense. The fact of the matter is, I agree with a lot of the testimony here. Marijuana's already here. It's not going to, you know, it's, if we decided to dismiss this idea right off the bat, cannabis is still here. And so I want to explore what we can do because, quite honestly, the idea of moving forward with the tax measure is not particularly palatable to me. I'm talking about a general tax measure, unless it's, you know, for a specific item. That means we have to get a two-thirds vote. So I see this as, as an opportunity that we should look at and analyze it and make an informed decision. If we're going to choose to make an informed decision, we need to have the data. We need to explore the data and see what it looks like. So, so I'm, my direction to staff is, let's continue to look at this issue.
Councilmember Middleton.
Yeah, so took a moment to gather my thoughts. And I've also really thought about and listened to what the community is saying here. And I actually, you know, on my little sheet here, kept tally marks for those who show up because it's important when you show up and you're giving your opinion, you're giving your thoughts on the matter. And based on the support that I've seen today, I am comfortable with continuing to explore, as Vice Mayor, sorry, Councilmember Schaefer has said, to continue the conversation, exploring to see where this can take us and where it can go. I understand that before I was on the council, we might have made a different decision, but I do believe that our community has changed, and this is a great opportunity for us to fill in some of those gaps. And also, after hearing some of these powerful stories about how this cannabis has changed the lives of individuals for the better, it's definitely worth just, you know, looking into.
Thank you very much. Nothing?
We see nothing. Me, nothing?
Yeah. You have questions or comments? Ms. Vice Mayor?
She doesn't have any questions or comments at this time.
Okay, so we're discussing.
Does Council want to continue further discussion and staff work on this item? And the answer for me is yes. I think, though, that what I'd like to see is, because I still want to get more information. I'm with the 50s and 60s group. It was a different product back then. And the first time I ever did it, which was over 65 years ago, the last and first time I ever did it, 65 years ago, I told God that if I could survive this, I'll never touch it again. So I have not. And so, plus, being a veterinarian, if you, and when it was illegal, I would have lost my drug license to practice medicine. So I was very careful about, you know, misusing drugs. But I think that we need to look at this. My, I like the idea that the people will, even if they don't show up at community meetings, they'll have a chance to vote on it at the ballot. So I do want to encourage us to put something on a ballot, if it's going to be on a ballot. And I don't, I'm not sure how much revenue we can anticipate from something. It'll be based on what of our anticipated size, sales ability. I mean, I'd like to involve this front row in our planning process because I think they know a lot about it and what's good and bad about dispensaries. I will confess that city manager and I took a tour of one in the city of Davis, and I was quite impressed. It just looks like a regular store. I mean, it's just like you go to the store, you get products on the shelf, and it's regulated. It's incredible. I was very impressed. I would not have thought it looked the way it looked. I think people would be impressed to see the store. So when they invite you to come and look, go look. And so I do want to look into this. We need a little more information about, you know, what our anticipated problems would be. I know the police chief will work out all of the issues with safety and distances and all that. That'll come out in the, in the planning, but is it, I think the community has changed. Portia's right. The community's changed. I would think I was on the council when we banned adult bookstores. We banned everything. So it's like, we've changed. So anyways, that's what I support. Go forward with something.
Councilmember Lopez Ta.
Thank you, Mayor. Fellow council members, for your comments. Thank you, our public that took the time to speak to us. I come from this, at this issue, a little bit differently. And I am a child of a drug addict who only did marijuana. Talk about, you know, you've talked about many life-changing things, and I think that's incredible. I do believe that there is a use for medical marijuana. I do. But I also know that there is a serious impact that most people don't talk about that I represent personally. And so while I hear all of the information, I do concur with those who've spoken from my district that I represent, that this is not a good idea for our community. We've talked about this over the years, and it's been, it's been struck down, spoken against, moved with regulation and restriction over those years. And I still agree with those things. Those are the things that makes me proud to be part of our community. I recognize that we have many speakers today who are not part of the Citrus Heights community. And while I love that you want to start businesses here, I am pro-business all the way. But I heard from my residents who said no. So I thank you for your comments, but I am not in favor of moving forward with this discussion.
Thank you. So I want to clarify one thing, and it's not clarify, but just mention one thing, and that's because there's a lot of discussion here about extra tax revenue and how that would help the city and whatnot. So I just want to be clear so that the community understands, we are doing very well in Citrus Heights. And yeah, you can always use extra money. We could find something to do with it, no doubt about it. But I just want to be clear in saying that our city is doing very well. We have about a 25% surplus of reserve type of scenario in our city. We spend our money wisely here, and we get by with what we have, and we know what we are. And I just want to be clear to the community in case something might be getting turned or twisted, that we're just looking at, you know, another way to make money. Can we get more money, more money? So that being said, I am a child of the 60s. Unlike my fellow council member here and my friends in the audience, they called it the evil weed back in the 60s. It's never touched my lips. And but I know it's touched a lot of lips. I will say this, and I've said this publicly before, that my parents died in their 60s of cancer, and I would have gone and got them anything, anything to relieve their pain and suffering. And if it would have meant, you know, meeting Johnny behind the liquor store to buy some weed, I would have done that for them. So I'm a firm believer in that there are medicinal needs for medical marijuana. On the flip side, I'm very much against recreational marijuana. I wish nobody would do that. You know, I mean, I just don't think that's a good idea. But, but I'm also this too. I'm a partaker of an adult beverage. And who am I to say that that's okay, but you can't decide to relax with your chosen substance? So it's a tough call in that respect that certainly we can all agree, I don't know how anybody could ever disagree, that alcohol does a whole lot worse for American society than cannabis does. But I just wish people wouldn't do it. I wish you wouldn't smoke it. You know, I don't understand putting smoke in your lungs. But so that's where I'm at on the use side. I'm really extremely concerned about us looking at placing taxes on this, even though I'm sure there will be some level of tax. These taxes that get built into this is what exacerbates the black market. It is horrible, and it's, it creates, I think, a worse problem than not even be involved in it then. So if this council ever decides to move forward, I hope that they would exercise a lot of caution on any kind of tax and maybe even look towards the community benefit fund, if anything, at some sort of lower, lower, lower level than we see in the surrounding area. And then I did have, I should have started with this. Do we have any maps? Did we create any maps that shows where such a facility might be opened within that 600-foot confinement or anything like that?
We haven't prepared maps yet. We were looking for direction before.
So did we identify that there are actual retail locations that could be used with that restriction?
We have not mapped it at all.
Okay. I think that's extremely important. I think that needs to be done first. I don't understand, you know, us doing anything with this. If the restriction creates the inability to open a store, a dispensary in any reasonable place, you know, I'm sure that, you know, Safeway wouldn't want it next to them or something like that.
The staff report suggested antelope crossing and the northern part of Auburn.
We have some suggestions of places that would be good target areas. Yes, so the antelope crossing in Auburn Boulevard, but we have not mapped distances because I think that's a discussion where we need to have more feedback from the council in terms of what do you consider a sensitive use? Do you want separation between them? There's a lot of conversations that would probably have to come through the nuts and bolts discussion that would have to come later on.
Okay. And so I would like to see a map of the state-required 600 feet, perhaps 750 feet and 1,000 feet, and see what that looks like. And again, does it still allow for a reasonable continuing of just even deciding to do such a thing? I think that's about it. I think that we've heard consensus tonight to move forward. Do we need to do motions on this or just, no, just consensus to move forward? On the first one about consider placing a cannabis tax measure on the ballot, I'm going to say I'm against that, and I don't know where we are.
We have to August, right? We have to August to make that?
Yeah.
So we don't need to make a decision?
August would be the absolute latest. Our suggestion would be, that would be by July 11th is what we would target, just to give us a little bit of buffer room with the county.
The next up would really be to just look at some of the things that were discussed and that kind of thing. You could provide us maps and.
Crime stats, all those things.
Sample regulations that will alleviate fears of whatever.
Yeah, we, we could explore different approaches in terms of regulations and ask for some feedback on that. It might suggest, one option would be to explore the public outreach first to take some sentiments, if that's the council's flavor, and see where that lands, and then, and then we explore regulations.
I like to look at regulations because I think regulations make a difference to the public. Like, I would not approve of something in my neighborhood, but if it's out there on the freeway, you know, fine. So I think it makes a difference where it is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, go ahead, Tim.
Sorry, I got one more. So the question is, approve the proposed timeline for implementation is this, what's actually on the agenda? And what I'd, what I'd really like to see is a flash vote, like, as soon as possible, so that we can get a sense of what does the community really think about this? And I'd love to have some input on what the questions on the flash vote are, like, if it was proposed, that it was required for a particular interchange near the highway, near the freeway. That's, those sort of questions could qualify the sentiment of the community. So that's the first thing I'd like to see is a flash vote.
People on the flash vote.
There's 800 people. That's a pretty decent.
Is it 800? We have 800 people?
I'm not sure the total quantity, but it is statistically valid sample size.
Yeah, that's a pretty decent sample size for the size of our community.
I think looking at the timeline, because my understanding is, we can say that we want to move forward with this, and at any point in time that we look at community engagement and see that it's not, you know, worth the squeeze, so to speak, we can, we can just stop and say, okay, no, the community has spoken, that's it. So I think the timeline as it is, and going forward, if you choose to go forward tonight, is appropriate. And based on community engagement from now until April, seeing what it says, I'm sure we'll get, we'll get some type of reporting back before then, and we can make, we can move forward from there.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, I think we have direction. Satisfactory. Very good. Next item, please.
The next item is regular calendar, item number 12. The subject is adoption of citywide objective design and development.
objective design and development standards. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution adopting objective design standards for the review of qualifying multifamily and residential mixed-use development within the city's commercial corridors, and finding the guidelines are exempt from California Environmental Quality Act under section 15061B3.
Good evening, council. Allison Bermudas with the Planning Division tonight. I'm here before you with a review and asked for your adoption of the objective and design development standards that would apply citywide. And to refresh, I was before you in October with a very similar project that focused on Auburn Boulevard. So it took our Auburn Boulevard specific plan area and developed objective design standards specifically for that area. So now we have expanded that into the other commercial areas for citywide. So tonight, we'll talk, remind you what objective design and development standards are, and why we need them, and how the relationship back to the Auburn Boulevard plan that you saw earlier. So as a reminder, objective design standards are measurable standards that we can apply in our toolkit as we're doing zoning and development projects. They're measures and items that we can apply to multifamily or residential projects that really quantify how the development is going to look. There's no subjective information in these, they're all very objective. So why do we need them? We really have to monitor what the state has been doing with our regulations for housing. And so they have told us, and this is in the government code, that we can have no personal or subjective judgment in our development standards when we look at certain housing projects. So the government code is telling us, and many of the laws that have come down for housing have put this into play, and it says that your zoning and how you review a housing project, should they qualify for a certain type of project that would come before you, you cannot use your subjectivity. They have to be objective. So the toolkit, as you recall from Auburn Boulevard, this is the same toolkit, it counts and measures, it's very clear. So developer proposing a project could look at it and be very defined whether the project is going to meet the standards. So you have very specific data as far as a measurement of a setback, the height limit, it's going to have ratios, it's going to use scorecard-type measuring. So it's very clear to anyone reading the code of the project and how it would apply. So as I mentioned, the state has passed several housing bills over the past several years, and they all include language relating back to objective standards, starting back all the way in the Housing Accountability Act. And then really in 2017, they ramped up with the housing bills, and each one listed here states in there that projects have objective design standards. So we're trying to catch up our codes to include those standards, so that should we get a project that qualifies to process under one of these legislative actions, that we can process the project and get the outcome that really, that we're looking for. So the purpose of adopting these tonight, these, as we recall, we did the Auburn Boulevard ones, addressed that section of town, and these would apply to the other commercial areas throughout the city. So the same standards would be for Auburn Boulevard for the other commercial areas in the city. So it really will establish the streamlining application review process for housing projects, and we'll have our obligation for the legislation. We'll meet that obligation. As, these are applicable to qualified, as I mentioned, qualified housing projects. So these are multifamily projects or mixed-use projects, so there's commercial and residential combined, that are asking for some streamlining, some sort of governmental action through those legislations that I showed. So they are committed to their end of the bargain by either providing prevailing wage to their workers, using certain unionized workers, and they are going to follow their obligation for those laws. And if they do that, then they get the streamlining process, and they would apply under those actions, under those different housing bills. So they only apply if the applicant is proposing one of those actions. So if someone's proposing a multifamily development, but they're not seeking streamlining, they don't want to comply, they're not seeking affordable housing component, which most of them have some sort of a component for affordable housing, if they're seeking, if they're not seeking any of those, then they would fall under our standard process. So very specific type of project that would be using these standards. As you remember, it's a, it's kind of a layer cake now in the planning world. The legislature is setting down, providing us lots of actions and, and updating codes that we have to follow. So we have to take what they give us, and then we apply the city's general plan, which is really our long-term future of how we're going to look and how we're going to develop. Then we have our specific plans that give us a little bit more information in certain areas. And then we have to apply our zoning code, and these standards are kind of that top layer. So if they're doing all those other actions up to the top, and then they are going to apply for affordable housing project or some sort of action under the bills, we have these standards that will finish off the project. As I mentioned, we did see these for the Auburn Boulevard plan. This is expanding it citywide. It's a very similar booklet, as we saw in the past. It's got the standards, it's got all the toolkits in it that we need for the affordable housing or for these type of projects for the rest of the city. And as you recall, in the Auburn Boulevard plan, it took the Boulevard and broke it down into nodes, into areas, and then it had standards depending on the location along the Boulevard. That same process is used for the rest of the city. So we took our commercial zoned areas and see how they match up to the zones, and then we apply those zones and those development standards depending on their commercial zoning. So we have, in the city, we have a BPR, Business Professional Zone. We have limited commercial, we have shopping center and a variety of commercial zones. And so depending on what those, the intent of those zones are, then they would be applicable to our zoning districts in the development standards. So we have two. We have the neighborhood zone, and we have the Main Street zone. Each one with a different development. Should housing come into an area that's in the neighborhood zone, this is really our small to medium commercial areas. And then we have the Main Street zone, which is your large, medium to larger footprint areas. So if you look at a zoning map, this is like Sunrise and Antelope, you'll see there's a variety of commercial zonings. You have shopping center, you have general commercial. Those are larger footprints, commercial areas, so they would be applicable to that Main Street zone. And then to the north of that, you have the limited commercial zoning areas, which is kind of our buffer between some residential and, and commercial. And so that would be your more neighborhood zone. So the standards are different, depending on the zone that they would follow, as far as allowed heights and density and other development standards. And the reason we need these is, if you recall, so we, the laws state that we have to have objective design standards. And if you look in our zoning code, we, while we do have some items in there that are very objective, we have setbacks, we have height limits, that in our design guidelines are not so specific, they're more subjective. So if you received a project to develop in a commercial area, and we didn't have design standards, they could bring in a project. In the case of this example, this is picking out the, what we would consider objective in the Auburn Boulevard plan, then this is a type of project that we could get, because this is all of our objective standards. Really, you would have a very long, tall building, not much relief, because the objective standards that are, you would find in the, in the guide are very limited. But by applying the objective design standards, you would get a different feel along the Boulevard. So you'd get buildings that are broken up, there's visual relief, there's architecture around the roof, there's steps, there's porches. So a very different feel for the same area using the objective design standards. So that's why they're very important for us, so that we can redefine, should we get a project in that qualifies, so that we could have the project, end result project to look how we would like it to look, and how really the city's vision was for the city to develop. So this is an overview. This is the adoption of the citywide objective design standards. In conjunction with these standards and what we adopted in 2023 for the Auburn Boulevard plan, it really provides us the policies to implement, should we receive an application for a qualifying housing project in our commercial areas that are seeking the streamlining provisions set out by the state. And I have a motion for you, and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments for staff?
Yes.
Counselmember Schaefer.
I understand what you're, what you're saying, Allison, with regard to what we need, what, in order to comply with state law. But this doesn't preclude our oversight for any particular project that, for, you know, this is just kind of an overview, and then when we get into a specific area where we actually have an application, we still have oversight over the application for, of the, over that process, correct?
Well, yes and no. If they are applying for a residential project under one of those legislative actions, then our discretion is only what we have in objective design standards. We don't have any other discretion.
Does it come with one car on Auburn Boulevard? I always love that.
Any other questions coming?
No.
Questions or comments? No, no. No other questions or comments? Any motions?
This could have been on-
I think there was one public comment.
Yeah, I do have one written public comment. I don't know if there was any others from the audience on this item, but I do have one comment. So I'll go ahead and read that now, Mayor. So we re, received a written public comment from Rick Hodgkins, and he states, "Other cities, just like Sacramento and San Francisco, have community models that where there is mixed-use development combined with multifamily housing, all-in-one building support this, and I would ask that the city council please do the same." And that concludes his comments.
Yeah, and, and I guess I'll just say this. I'll, I'm going to symbolically vote no, because I'm, I just don't like the state requiring us to do these kinds of things. So, any motions?
Can I symbolically vote?
As long as, yeah.
As long as it passes.
You'll go next to last. Any motions or?
You know, I have a question. I have one question. So we hired a company to do this objective standard. Is that what I read in the staff report?
That's correct.
When, when that company gives us our, our design standards, is there a choice? I mean, is there like, you know how like when we were picking the fence for Greenback Lane and say, do you want this design? Do you want this design? Do they have a choice? And this is they picked like what they thought was the best, or was there a choice for us to pick from their choices?
Well, sort of, but it, what they did was really take what was already in the plan, the design choices that were already in the plan, and put those into objective language. So it didn't really change what the vision of the plan-
The setbacks awful closer to the front than our, right, than, sorry, than our setbacks. I mean, I, I think they pushed everything forward to the street.
In the commercial zones, the setbacks are very limited, and that's where this is generally applied, is it is applied to commercial zones where the setbacks are very minor. So that's showing, what it's showing you in those drawings is what you could build to, based on our current standards. I would say that these guidelines, these objective standards, to your question about design, they don't specify, it's not like, you're not specifying like a Santa Barbara-style, you know, barrel tile roof. It's more good architectural practices, such as having articulation. And if you say articulation right now-
So there is some choices we get to make. There, there are some design things we can ask the person to do, right? I mean, it's not just, here's what I'm going to do, and you have to like it or lump it, right?
I don't think it's going to get as specific as, as you'd like. I think what it, what it's saying, like, for now, for example, one of the things that's in any design guidelines is there should be articulation. What you think articulation means and what Allison thinks articulation means might be two different things. So now, instead of saying, it should be articulation, it'll say, you shall set back a minimum of five feet and then go up 10 feet. Like, it's very specific to that. It's not really telling you how, what the design's going to look like. It gives, it's telling you how, how you get to the design.
I think what Brett says is true, though. Some of the, the rules you cited before the odds, the ones that led up to the newest, some of those are the worser ones, you know, putting residential in our commercial zones and that stuff. That's bad. All right.
Any motions?
Okay. I move that we adopt a resolution of the city council, the city of Citrus Heights, adopting objective design standards for the review of qualifying multifamily and residential mixed-use development within the city's commercial corridors, and finding the guidelines are exempt from this, from the California Environmental Quality Act under section 15061B3.
Second.
It's been moved by councilmember Middleton and seconded by councilmember Lopez Taft. Any questions or comments regarding the motion? Can I get a roll call, please?
I have a-
Yes, go ahead.
What happens if we don't pass this? What do we do then?
We go to jail.
Well, you, should we receive an application? And, just to put it out there, we haven't really had anyone inquire, so this is really making sure that we're okay, should we get an application. But if we would get an application, we could end up, as shown here, if they applied under one of those legislative actions, and then they looked at our objective design standards that we have, we could be, have a building such as this.
You, you may have seen in the news, Elk Grove's in a pretty serious lawsuit right now with the state and the developer over an objective standard. They're haggling over, essentially, what is an objective standard or not. So they spend an inordinate amount of time on that right now. So our job is hopefully to protect us from getting down that path.
And, and here's my, I hate both of these options.
There you go.
I, I don't like this one, and I don't like the, the preferred option, that has a courtyard and all that.
I asked if there was another design.
I don't like either one of them. And I'm just like, is this what I'm buying?
I think this-
Mr. Mayor, if I can jump in here too. Councilmember Schaefer, these are like the blockiest of block models. So this, I don't think the market would bring that to the city anyhow. But what these design standards do is they preserve some local control. They allow you to go ahead and have some standard of design, ensure there's some minimum setbacks standards. It doesn't mean it's going to be built exactly what those minimum standards are, but it gives you more than what a, they, otherwise, literally, they could come in and build a box. And that's what these design standards are seeking to avoid. So it does allow us to preserve some local design control. Certainly, when we have conversations with developers about their design and what the community might like, we'd still try to influence their design, certainly. But having some objective standards, when you get into an argument about, you know, what they shall do, at least you can point to an objective standard and say, yeah, you shall do this. Versus if we don't have that, they can do the box. That's why we're recommending approval of this.
Well, let me just clarify too. The motion's going to pass, so however you want to vote, go ahead and vote, you know. The motion will pass. I'll say it that way.
Okay, all right.
Okay, roll call vote?
Councilmember Lopez Taft?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Karpinski-Costa? Mayor Daniels?
No.
He'll be the token no.
The token no.
They put trees in there too, don't they? I mean, there's just landscaping and all that.
It's done. It's done. Next item.
Next item is department reports, and there are none. So the next item is city manager items.
I think I just have about 10 slides here. Now, good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Ash, feeling your city manager with just a few quick updates here. One of the ones that was mentioned at the outset is just the great job our team did, if you want to flip to the slide, please, with the storm that we just had. There was quite a windstorm. I'm sure everybody experienced it in their own way. Certainly, our community had a lot of calls of service that came in, and to our GSD team, also to our police dispatch team, and especially in particular with our General Services Department, the team there really did a fantastic job in quickly addressing issues that came up in the community. You could see we had 89 tree calls for down and damaged trees. Of those, I believe only about eight of those were city-maintained trees. So most of those were private trees, and that's kind of a testament to the good work that's done by the team relative to the arborist work here in Citrus Heights. And we do have a lot of trees, we're a city of trees.
So all those 89 were private trees?
Eight of those were public.
Oh, eight, okay.
And then 81 were private. So just kind of a testament of the good work that the team's been doing.
No injuries? No injuries?
Not to my knowledge, not to my knowledge. So, but there was definitely a lot of activity during the storm. The team did a fantastic job. Very grateful to them for their hard work. The team did a fantastic job, very grateful to them for their hard work.
So, I got a question about the down fences. How are those reported? Because I had a down fence, but I didn't report it because it was between me and my next, my backyard neighbors, so no public access or anything. How did the six down fences?
You know, I would have to look into that one. I'd say we get calls. So, if a down fence, I mean, it could be if there's a question, maybe it's a commercial fence. I think for the residential fences, like, I had a panel flopping around in the wind and fixed it, fortunately. I think there was plenty of residential fences that we didn't hear about. I don't know the nature of those, those could have been commercial activity type fences.
Maybe part of the public right-of-way or something.
Or like, yeah, blocking public right-of-way. For instance, in some of these pictures, you can see, the top picture, there's, it looks like a hurricane hit it, it's fenced with down trees, public right-of-way, so on and so forth. So, typically, the ones we're hearing about are the ones that are blocking public way. Sometimes, we do hear about private fences, though, too.
I want to applaud our public services department, General Services Department, for all this work. This is a lot of work, while the rest of us are sitting home in our, with our candle lights, you know, because we didn't have electricity. They were out there breathing the wind and the rain.
Good job, Dave.
Yeah, and how excellent work, excellent work to the team.
Thank you.
All right, and our next one, we do have our ballot box, a secured ballot box outside of City Hall here for the presidential primary election, and you can drop your ballot box off. I mean, I'm sorry, you can drop your ballot off in the box. Please don't drop any more boxes off. But we have our certified ballot box just outside of City Hall's doors there, and that is a 24-hour ballot box, and it does have cameras that tie back to our PD dispatch center. There's also in-person voting available as well at the Citrus Heights Community Center from February 24th to March.
Can I bring my ballot in and feed it into the scanner?
Yeah, under the in-person.
Yeah, and if I bring my ballot in, not the, can I just walk up and feed it into the scanner?
I think so. I did last year.
Maybe at a vote center. I'm not sure of the services that they have at the vote center and in-person vote center, but the box outside of City Hall is just to drop a sealed envelope.
But last year, you could go into the community center and you can, if your thing's damaged and you bring it in, they'll give you a new ballot. They'll give you a new ballot, you stuck it in the machine.
Okay. Well, definitely, you can drop it off in the box or at the vote in-person center as well.
All right.
And then, finally, this is a, well, it's a free event, so I won't call it sold out, but it's booked out, the community workshop on February 10th. And I know the council's excited about this as well, and that's February 10th from 9:00 to 2:00, and this is really kind of part of our neighborhood engagement effort. So, appreciative of our community engagement team for organizing this and very excited about the workshop. I know I'll be there as well as the rest of our executive team as well. So, looking forward to that. And that concludes my, oh, thank you. There were some questions about President's Day as well, and so, we will be closed, the city hall will be closed on February 19th in observance of President's Day.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Anything? Anything?
So, I just have one more comment. Can I make a comment?
Yep.
I neglected to mention this. I just wanted to recognize that on February 10th, on Saturday, we also do have the Lunar New Year for the Buddhists, and we have, on the 14th, we have Ash Wednesday starting, and coincidentally, that is also when Lent starts, so.
It's Ash Wednesday, Ash. It's his day, Ash Wednesday.
Ash Wednesday. Had a community member ask that I recognize holidays.
I have one other question. Are we going to discuss change in our council meeting nights? Should that be on an agenda item and have the public comment on it, in case it makes a difference to the public?
I didn't know that was on.
No, put it in a future agenda. You don't, no?
I didn't know that was something we were considering. Is it?
That's not on the agenda tonight, but that's certainly something we could calendar for a future meeting.
It was in your district report, your manager's report.
Yeah, we can talk, if the council wanted to bring that forward as a future item, or we could bring it as a staff-driven item in a future agenda.
Let's bring it forward. I like that idea.
So.
Anything else over there?
So, you wanted to bring it forward?
Yeah, Pusha said.
Yeah. You said, yeah.
That's one or the two and a three.
A three.
We will bring it forward at a future meeting for discussion.
At least you get public input.
Right, we bring that forward as a staff report with public dialogue, and that would take an action of the council with public feedback. And so, we'd bring that forward as a future item.
Okay. I'd like to follow up on the 20 traffic signal lights out. I would like to have back some sort of information-type report or whatever that addresses signal lights going out, what happens, how are they all set up? Are there different ones throughout the city? The light at Auburn and Halifax was out for, I think, close to 48 hours. I know there were several accidents in that. One of them involved a school bus. And so, that was dark, it wasn't flashing red. So, I'd like to find out, what's the difference? Why is it happening somewhere that it goes flashing red in other ways, other areas, it just stays dark?
Do you need a second?
Go ahead and give me a second, just to, give me a second. Okay. And anything, anything from anybody else? Tonight, we are going to adjourn our meeting, as we mentioned earlier, in honor of Lauren Hammond, former Sacramento City Council member. And I'd also like to adjourn this meeting in honor of Citrus Heights Water District employee Jason Tupper, who recently passed away on January 26, 2024. Jason has served the city, excuse me, has served the city, that served the Citrus Heights community for over 32 years. He joined the water district in July of 1991 and was currently serving as a water resources specialist. Jason was a beloved husband, father, and friend, and I ask you to join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.